I'm advised by the town clerk that we have a quorum. Would you take your seats, please? We have quiet in the auditorium so we can get our proceedings underway. How many times do I have to bang this gavel to get you to take your seats and be quiet? I now call to order the second session of the 2019 annual town meeting. Would you please terminate your conversation and be seated? I don't want to have to single people out. Thank you. First, I want to -- we took three electronic votes last evening on item sixty-seven of the budget. And I have the following corrections to the results of those votes resulting from incorrectly recorded votes. Ladies and gentlemen, please be quiet. Can we close the doors in the back, please? I assume you can hear me, anyway. All right, we took three votes to -- electronic votes under Article Nine, item sixty-seven, last night. Here are the corrected tallies. The vote to -- first vote to terminate debate, the vote was one hundred and thirteen in favor, one oh one against, and eleven abstentions. That vote failed because it needed a two-thirds vote. On the motion to refer that matter, the vote was sixty-three in favor, one five -- one hundred and fifty-two opposed, and ten abstentions. That motion failed. On the main motion, the Ananian motion, the vote was one hundred and fifty-five in favor, fifty-eight opposed, and seventeen abstentions. That vote carried. The first item of business, as you voted last night, is Article Twenty. The motion under Article Twenty is found on page twenty-eight. Moved by Ms. Stone and seconded by Ms. Stamper, that the town amend its bylaws to improve gender equality, et cetera, in the words of the motion, which goes over to page twenty-nine.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Rebecca Stone, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Three. Thank you all for accommodating the students. Start us off on a positive note. Next Tuesday, May twenty-eighth, is International Menstrual Hygiene Day. That such a day exists is just one of the many things that I learned in the past year after reading an article by then-senior Sarah Graustra in the Sagamore, this high school's newspaper. Its headline was "Stigma Around Periods Produces Undue Shame." The article was funny, it was provocative, and to my surprise, it was raising issues I had never thought about, despite having long-lived experience of everything it described. That article and the students behind it, some -- Every day, more than eight hundred million people around the globe have their period. Yet historically, menstruation has been used to demean and exclude women, with mention of it taboo. In the U.S., girls learn early that having their period is their problem, to be discreetly dealt with so that it is invisible to others. The taboo around acknowledging menstruation is what leads to feelings of shame if it is revealed. We experience the taboo in many ways, including referring to periods with euphemisms that I'm sure many of you in this room have used or at least heard. Time of the month, a visit from Aunt Flo, on the rag, my grandmother called it "the curse." The taboo unfortunately also pervades our public policy. Low-income mothers receiving WIC, which is a monthly subsidy to new mothers for health and nutrition, cannot use that money to buy menstrual hygiene products. Food stamps do not cover tampons or pads. In fact, the program puts them in the same category as cigarettes and alcohol. And in thirty-six states, Massachusetts is happily not one of them, menstrual products are taxed as a luxury item. The vast majority of people who menstruate cannot predict when it will happen. And as about half of Town Meeting probably knows, there is nothing luxurious or even remotely adequate about rolling many lengths of toilet paper around your hand to create a do-it-yourself sanitary pad. Toilet paper, however, is what we provide in restrooms because public hygiene laws, like many of our laws, primarily reflect a male experience. Tonight, we can change that here by voting to provide menstrual hygiene products along with toilet paper in our public restrooms. The most common question on this article appropriately was how much will it cost? So first, the good news. The deputy town administrator estimates the impact of the bylaw on the town's operating budget at less than seventy-five-hundred dollars per year. More expensive are the one-time costs of implementation estimated at around forty-thousand dollars to be borne by the CIP principally for the purchase and installation of machines to dispense the products. Dispensing tampons and pads from machines helps protect the products from damage or petty vandalism, and it makes it harder for someone to take the products in bulk, reducing that possibility. Recognizing the many demands on our CIP, the bylaw has an effective date two years from now, allowing the town to phase in compliance and spread out the cost over several budget cycles, taking advantage of already planned and budgeted renovations, such as the comfort stations in our parks that will be renovated this year with monies we appropriated on Tuesday night. I hope you will vote yes on warrant Article Twenty to make Brookline the first municipality in the country to take this important step for public health, equity, and inclusion. And now I am delighted to turn the mic over to Carter Mucha, Aralajo, and Eva Stanley.
Hello, everyone. My name is Carter Mucha. I'm a senior at BHS and co-chair with Eva Stanley, also here tonight, of Brooklyn High School's NARAL Pro-Choice Club. Sarah Graustra, whose article in the Sagamore Rebecca talked about, was also a member of this group, which focuses not just on abortion rights, but is fundamentally about gender equity in the treatment of female bodies. Inspired by Sarah's daring and important article, our group decided to take on the issue of menstrual equity, starting us on this journey that began with working at BHS to de-stigmatize menstruation, and then led us to decide to try to change public policy. We have worked over the past months on the research, writing, and advocacy of this article. It has been inspiring to learn about so many efforts for menstrual equity around the globe, from groups of women on university campuses organizing emergency squads with products, to an Academy Award for a documentary about women making sanitary pads in India, from laws in New York State and Illinois to have free menstrual hygiene products in school, prison, and homeless shelter bathrooms, to Seoul, South Korea, where they are making products free in all public buildings. All of these efforts started by people insisting on talking more openly about menstruation. Having one's period, a regular and normal occurrence experienced by fifty-two percent of the population, can be physically painful or even debilitating. It is a time of heightened risk for infection, and even in the best of circumstances, can easily disrupt one's day at school or at work. If you menstruate but do not present as female, seeking menstrual products can be traumatizing. We are so excited and grateful that the school committee has responded to us with a promise to implement this article at BHS and to follow that with action in our middle grades. Now Town Meeting can show other cities and towns what it means for the whole town to live in its values of equity and inclusion. Making menstrual hygiene products free in all of Brookline's public bathrooms treats this totally normal and natural bodily function the way we treat all of the others. This is what equity is all about. Who better to lead on this than Brookline?
Hello, my name is Aralajo, and I'm a sophomore at BHS. Until getting involved in this effort, I thought of my period as something I had to deal with alone, just another responsibility nobody could help me with. Of course, the social taboos surrounding menstruation run deep. Rebecca talked about euphemisms, and I would like to add one more to the list. My family is from Albania, and their menstruation is just referred to as "it." I found working on this warrant article to be something that completely changed my mindset. I realized we deserved more and better. The reality of the matter is that many people who menstruate begin dealing with this from a young age. In schools, there are fourth or fifth graders going in search of a pad or a tampon. You're lucky if the pay machines in bathrooms have been filled, and luckier still if you're even carrying change with you or can afford to pay. Having no machine or simply not being able to carry change are the situations most familiar to me, because I have found myself in that position countless times. So what can you do? You can miss class to head to the nurse's office, wait in line for endless minutes, and ask for the product you need. While in line, you'll be asked why you're there and not quite know how to answer, because it isn't as if you are sick. To avoid that, sometimes you'll sidle up to friends in the hall and whisper your plea, one of the earliest instances of crowdsourcing a solution to a problem. But then, when you return to class, you'll be admonished for taking so long. And here's the thing, lots of times, you can't find anything, or simply cannot miss class long enough, so you roll up some toilet paper or even a sock -- this happens more than you want to know -- and hope for the best. Clearly, none of these are good options. There is no reason anyone should be subjected to the struggle. Shouldn't those who need access to basic hygiene products be provided with them? Please vote yes on this warrant article to ensure that they do, from the time they are in fourth grade to beyond.
Hello, my name is Eva Stanley, and I am a senior at BHS. It is an honor to be here presenting this warrant article. I would like to start on a personal note. One reason this article means a lot to me is because I have endometriosis, a chronic illness that makes having your period especially painful and that can also cause an unpredictable heavy flow of blood. When it comes to endometriosis, or polycystic ovarian syndrome, or endomiosis, all very common chronic illnesses that impact the experience of menstruation, suitable, safe, effective menstrual hygiene products are essential. This article and the accessibility it will provide to those products will mean a world of change for female-bodied people with reproductive system-related chronic illnesses like me. I'd like to use the rest of my time to address some of the concerns that we have heard about this warrant article. First, some have wonder -- worried that people will take large quantities of free products. Rebecca talked about how the dispensing machines protect against that. But the whole point of the article is to provide these products to people that need them for any reason. Is it really that big a deal if someone in need takes more than one? Second, we've been asked why the products are going to be in men's bathrooms. As Carter mentioned, this article recognizes that some people who menstruate and therefore need the products do not identify or present as female. If that means that fewer people use the products in men's bathrooms, that just saves the town money because they won't have to be replaced as often. Win-win. This warrant article would allow everyone who menstruates the dignity of being able to cope with their period when and where they need to. It's that simple. Thank you so much for listening, and please vote yes on warrant Article Twenty.
Many thanks to our Brookline High School students, and you've -- for those of us who are a little jaded about this, you've renewed our faith in the younger generation.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Claire Stamper, Precinct Five, speaking for the Advisory Committee. Warrant Article Twenty would amend the town's bylaws to require that the town provide free menstrual hygiene products in restrooms serving the general public in its public buildings. Article Twenty does not cover school restrooms, although we have just heard they will apply its principles, because they are under the jurisdiction of the school committee, nor does it cover Town of Brookline staff and employee restrooms, which are not open to the public. If it approves Article Twenty, Brookline would become the first municipality in the United States to provide free menstrual hygiene products in its public buildings. Cities in other countries have taken some action, including Seoul in South Korea and London, England. In 2018, Scotland became the first nation to guarantee free sanitary products to all students at schools, colleges, and universities. In the U.S., the states of New York and Illinois have mandated free menstrual hygiene products in public schools, grade six to twelve, in homeless shelters, and in prisons. California has mandated the same for public schools, grade six to twelve, that qualified for Title I low-income funding. A bill similar to those in Illinois and New York is now before our Massachusetts state legislature. Proponents of Article Twenty argue that menstrual hygiene products are as necessary for public health and hygiene as is toilet paper, and should be just as readily available. As a physician personally, I certainly agree. Hygiene products in public restrooms should be the norm. Limiting access to these products contributes to stigmatizing their use and the people who use them, as we have so eloquently heard from Brookline High School students tonight. This article makes a strong statement against that stigma and for inclusion of the LGBTQ community by requiring these products be available in all bathrooms regardless of gender designation, because not all female-bodied persons identify as female. Some members of the Advisory Committee question whether town funds should be spent on menstrual hygiene products. The question was also raised whether some individuals would take large numbers of the free products. Anecdotal reports from some of our libraries suggest that sometimes toilet paper rolls do get taken from the restrooms. Regarding the possibility of theft, the committee acknowledged during its discussion that we were not aware of ever having seen a budget increase request that referenced the need to replace such items, suggesting that to the extent the members of the public may help themselves to extra products, it is not likely to be a burden on the budget. The petitioner pointed out further that menstrual products would be dispensed from machines that mitigated against taking large quantities of the products while also protecting the product itself from tampering water or other contamination. As to other costs to the town, petitioner Rebecca Stone explained that maintenance and stocking of the products would be done by existing staff that already services restrooms, so there will be no need to hire more personnel. The most significant budget impact of the bylaw, according to a March 25 memo from Deputy Town Administrator Melissa Goff to the Select Board, is the one-time purchase and installation cost of approximately one hundred new product dispensing machines, which each cost about three hundred and fifty dollars. Ms. Goff estimated this will require forty-three thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars and eighty-seven cents from the capital improvements program. We commend the petitioner for setting the effective date two years hence so that the town can spread that capital cost across multiple years of the CIP and phase in implementation to take advantage of already planned and funded capital projects, such as the renovations of comfort stations in our parks that we just approved two nights ago. Ongoing operating costs for this bylaw are modest. The deputy town administrator's memo estimates the ongoing supplies cost for the tampons and pads themselves will be approximately seventy-three-hundred dollars each year. The main motion as offered by the Advisory Committee is substantively identical to that submitted by the petitioner, but the Advisory Committee noticed a discrepancy in the language of one of the definitions and the body of the warrant article as originally proposed. To resolve the discrepancy, we voted a minor change in the definitions section to bring it into accord with the body of the bylaw. With that change, as reflected in your combined reports, and by a vote of eleven in favor, none opposed, and four abstentions, the Advisory Committee recommends favorable action on warrant Article Twenty.
Thank you, Ms. Heller and Ms. Margolis. Would you come forward, please?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Nancy Heller, for unanimous Board of Select -- oops, Select Board. I'm going to invoke the Neil Waschinsky principle, which is that if you don't have anything else to add, just sit down. But before I do that, I want to stress the last point that Ms. Stamper made, which is that we appreciate the opportunity to have a couple of years to fit this into the CIP, to purchase the equipment over time and to manage it within our resources. So saying that, I would ask -- I would urge you to vote favorable action. The Select Board is five to zero in favor of this, so please vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Margolis. And Ms. Vanderzeil, would you come forward, please?
I am Hadassa Margolis, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Eight, and anything men can do, I can do bleeding. What is it, Hadassa? Is it your time of the month? My eighth-grade classmate asked me this in front of all our peers when I disagreed with a point he had just made about a text we were studying in English. Dirty, impure, hysterical, moody, unbalanced, hormonal, overemotional, irrational, unclean, unhinged, unglued, crazy. All words to describe a person when she is menstruating. But female bodies as young as nine menstruate. Would you ever condone calling a third grader crazy? This warrant article is about more than just placing a few tampons and maxi pads in all public bathrooms. It's about publicly showing our daughters that they have nothing to be ashamed about. It's publicly teaching our sons that misogyny will not be tolerated. It's about promoting body positivity and connecting to one's body, its functions, and its power. Some might argue, what's the big deal? Why does the town need to provide free supplies? I was taught to keep a tampon on me at all times, or at least a quarter to use a dispenser, and so I did. I also was taught to be prepared. Not everyone is, or can be. And tampons and maxi pads, as we've heard, are not luxuries, they are necessities, and they cost money. It's uncomfortable to think about people living and visiting in our community who don't have enough. And it's uncomfortable to think about women's uterine linings shedding and bleeding through our vaginas in our underwear. It is uncomfortable for others to think about female sexuality, which makes menstruation embarrassing and taboo, not something to talk about or reveal. Women need to be discreet and presentable, not dirty and unladylike. As a clinical social worker, a lot of my work revolves around shame, about feeling censored, hidden, wrong, about being less than, due to, among other things, gender or socioeconomic status. My work also demands cultural humility. I do not know what invisible loads the person in front of me carries. I do not know how their socioeconomic status, race, religion, sexual orientation, or gender identity impact their sense of self. But I have a responsibility to be curious and to respect where they are coming from, especially if it is different from my own experience, to help them construct their own narrative from a place of courage, not shame. We, as a society, have a responsibility to address the barriers that create and sustain stigma and silence. Let's stop treating menstruation like it's something to hide or make fun of. Please vote yes on Article Twenty.
Thank you. And Ms. McClellan, would you come forward, please?
Good evening. I'm Cornelia Vanderzeil, Town Meeting Member from Precinct Fifteen, but I am speaking on behalf of the Commission for Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations with unanimous support for this warrant article. This -- we -- the commission wants to thank the students who first brought this forward and the petitioner for bringing it to Town Meeting. We further appreciate the careful and thoughtful approach that was taken in writing this warrant article. For all the reasons that have been stated previously, and Hadassa is a pretty hard act to follow, thank you, Mr. Moderator, we urge favorable action on warrant Article Twenty.
Hi, I'm Nicole McClellan, Town Meeting Member in Precinct Eleven, and I'm here speaking on behalf of the Brookline Commission for Women, which voted unanimously to support this wonderful article brought by Rebecca Stone and her team. So thank you for that opportunity. I also won't take too much time. I agree with Select Board Member Heller when you don't have much to add, because I think that what the women before us have said is so powerful. I will say, we should think about what it means that three high school women will stand before us, two hundred and fifty of us in Brookline, and share their stories, be vulnerable, talk about periods, also provide statistics, and stand up just to persuade the legislative body of Brookline to take this step. I think that's really powerful, and a credit to you for doing that. I wouldn't have been able to do that in high school, for sure. So congratulations for standing up and doing that. I think this is a totally reasonable, relatively cost-efficient because of the way it was structured, but powerful step that we can take, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to move in a direction of better equity and do the right thing. So I encourage everyone to vote yes on the warrant article. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Keenan. Thank you, Ms. Keenan.
Hello, my name is Allison Keenan, and I live in Precinct 2. I am a 2018 graduate of Brookline High School, and along with Sarah Graustre and Stella Schiffman was a founding member of the NARAL Pro-Choice at Brookline High School Club three years ago. This article is important to me because I believe that access to feminine hygiene products is essential for respecting the basic sanitary needs of female-bodied people. At my college, there are similar dispensing machines that disposed free products in the bathrooms, the same thing mandated in this article. People were appreciative and respectful, and took only what they needed when they needed it. As a person who gets a period, I know firsthand the anxiety of being surprised by your period while in public. I used to work at the Brookline Pool, and one day while at work, I got my period earlier than I expected. I was lucky that a coworker had a tampon I could use, but the point is, I shouldn’t have had to go looking for her. If this warrant article passes, people at the pool in my position, and I guarantee you I was not the first or the last, will not have to go on a treasure hunt for a tampon because the products will be in the bathrooms. It is that simple. However, this article isn’t just for unexpected periods. We all expect that there is toilet paper for us to use when we go to public restrooms. It would be preposterous if we all walked around with rolls of toilet paper up our sleeve. So why do people who menstruate have to sneak a tampon up their sleeve or in their pocket when they’re on their period? The stigma around periods is ridiculous when you remember that it is a normal bodily function, but it is still very real. I am friends with a lot of incredibly strong women, but many of them would not be comfortable standing up here in front of all of you talking about their period. This article is important to me because it restores the dignity for people with periods in Brookline’s public restrooms. I urge you to vote yes on Article 20. Thank you for your time.
Those are the speakers, and I see no one at the microphone, so we turn to a vote on the motion on page 20-8. Those in favor, please raise your hands. Those opposed? Any abstentions, other than moderator and town clerk? That motion carries unanimously. Now, the next article in the, in the warrant is Article 10, but we have voted to move Article 10, which relates to the acquisition of the Newbury College property to the end of the, our business at this annual town meeting. So we now turn to Article 11. The motion under Article 11 is on the pink supplement, number one, page one, that the town authorized the Select Board to grant and acquire certain rights and easements relating to the Brookline High School expansion. Moved by Ms. Heller, seconded by Mr. Green, requires a two-thirds vote. Ms. Heller.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator Nancy Heller, for unanimous Select Board. I do have a PowerPoint. Can you put that up? Hello? I’ll get going. I’ll make my preliminary remarks. Good. This is the last big step before we begin construction in early June. I’ve developed, we’ve developed this PowerPoint in order to spare you from having to squint at the pink supplement, and I’m trying to understand it. It is, it is difficult. Let me make a couple of points before I go into that, and that is that this is, is, these easements have been worked on for the last 18 months at least. Bi-weekly meetings with several members of our project team, our outside council who specializes in MBTA affairs, and our goal here was to develop an easement that, for the high school building itself, that was exclusive to us. The MBTA, I guess, may perhaps in its normal course of business, just wants to have a non-exclusive easement, so, you know, everybody can use everything, but, or both sides. But that wasn’t our goal in this instance. So that’s why this is broken into seven pieces. The first piece is labeled “Easement A,” and that’s the piece on the corner, on the corner of Tappan and Cypress, mostly facing Tappan. It’s pretty ugly, should I say, right now, but we intend to beautify it. It is an easement, the MBTA controls that property. It’s an easement from them to the town. It’s an exclusive easement, meaning that we have the exclusive rights to it. We are going to be landscaping it. It’s going to have some entrances to our building, and we’ll be able to access our foundation for maintenance and other issues. Go to the next slide, please. Where, let’s see. Oh, thank you. Okay. Okay, so this is easement B, which is again from the MBTA to the town of Brookline, but this one is a non-exclusive ground easement, so that both the MBTA and Brookline can access the, this section under the bottom of the deck of the high school. And then we have exclusive air rights above. So again, we’ve protected our, the town in terms of exclusive rights to the building. The use, we need to be able to access our foundation and exclusively our building. They need to access underneath for their equipment, and I believe this is where their so-called bungalows are. And before you begin to think they have these nice little cabins in the woods, no, that’s not it. They are these rectangular, maybe three feet high boxes that store some of their equipment and hold some of their equipment necessary for their operation, and they have to be able to get, to access those. This is what we call easement C, which is from the MBTA to the town, and this is again an exclusive easement to us, so that we have, we are the only party that has the right to access our building. This is the piece that’s over the track. We have the air rights. We get to control the building itself. This little strip is easement D, which is from the MBTA to the town. It’s a non-exclusive ground easement to the bottom of the deck, just, just like in B, and exclusive to us, air rights easement on the deck and above. So it’s very similar to what I described in B. Now, I’m going to skip letters a bit. The next, the next one is easement F. This is from the MBTA to the town of Brookline. This is where the MBTA’s parking was, but it will now be a non-exclusive ground easement for our parking use. We will be landscaping it. There’ll be part of the plaza here. The reason it needs to be non-exclusive is the MBTA needs the right to access their tracks in cases of emergency or significant maintenance that has to be done. So that’s why it’s non-exclusive. I’m skipping a piece there, and that piece in the middle is not subject to an easement. That’s a piece that we own already, and we are using it for our parking. That piece is easement E. It is from the town, we own it, to the MBTA, MBTA, and this replaces their parking that you saw in easement, I think it was, I’ve gotten the numbers all mixed up. It’s the one we took away from them. We’re using it, they’re using ours now, for their parking, and it’s also a non-exclusive, so that both parties have the right to go on it. We get the fees from the meters that it will be installed there. We also need to maintain it in terms of snow, and they also need to be able to access it for their vehicles as well. The final easement is G, which is a, an easement from us to the MBTA. It’s non-exclusive, it’s a ground easement, and its use will be the emergency access that the MBTA requires from the station. So that basically is the scheme. You can see, we’ve, I believe we’ve been very careful about what we grant to them and what we receive back. I want to take this opportunity to thank the very, very many people who helped in this process up to now, and I don’t have the list in front of me, but it’s about, it’s about 100 people on it. First and foremost is--
Well, let’s, let’s thank them collectively, Ms. Heller, because you’ve already been seven and a half minutes.
Yes, I am going to do that. I’m going to do that, but I want to give a shout out to Ray Masak, who is here. He’s our project manager from the Building Department. Donna Camiola is also here, and she worked very hard, she’s from our outside project manager from Hill International, and she worked very hard on this easement process, and will be available to answer questions that you have. So let me just say that this again is our, is a big step toward our next, our, our opening of construction on or about June 10th, shovels in the ground. I urge you to vote yes on these easements. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, ladies and gentlemen, I remind you that we have a five-minute limit on presentations. I let Ms. Heller complete hers, because I think it’s important for you to understand the various easements that we’re granting and receiving, but in the future, please limit your remarks to five minutes, and I’ll try not to be overbearing about this, but we have a huge agenda that remains before us. Mr. Van Skoyak.
John Van Skoyak, Precinct 13, on behalf of the Advisory Committee. By a vote of 16 to 2 to 1, the Advisory Committee recommends favorable action on the motion offered by the Select Board.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Englander and Mr. Micklejohn, would you come forward, please?
Scott Englander, Precinct 6. As some of you know, I live near Brookline Hills Station and use it frequently. Our 17-year-old is a student here at BHS, and I care deeply about public space, public transportation, and the environment. Along with my fellow Precinct 6 TMMs and others, I’ve been advocating for a design for Brookline Hills Station and the environs that better serves the thousands of daily users of the station and the hundreds of students who will occupy the new building, straddling the green line tracks there. I’m not going to comment on how bad the initial design was conceived, that was conceived without consulting T riders and commuters would have been for all concerned, because fortunately, the design has progressed with some significant improvements. Thanks in no small way to Representative Tommy Vitolo, who on short notice took the initiative to organize a public meeting to hear from residents and users of the station about the original redesign, which was very well attended. And I’d like to expressly thank Susan Wolf-Ditkoff, co-chair of the Building Committee for the BHS expansion. When the design flaws in the original redesign were brought to her attention, she was quick to understand the issues, solicit additional public feedback, and ask the designers to come up with improvements to address the issues. Based on the second iteration of the station redesign, things are moving in a good direction. But I have some serious concerns, and that’s why I’m here talking to you. So why is this important? Well, transportation accounts for 40% of carbon emissions here in Massachusetts and in the U.S. Most of that’s from cars. So Brookline can’t be serious about climate change if it isn’t serious about public Getting more people to take the T instead of driving or taking an Uber has an immediate, many immediate positive impacts on our community. Over 3,200 people board the T every weekday, on average, at Brookline Hills Station. The new station will handle longer trains and will accommodate those of us who need accessible level boarding. Brookline has relatively little direct influence on what the T can do to improve or expand service, but we do have a once-in-a-generation opportunity to make changes in the station design that can improve the commuter and rider experience and make the difference in whether people decide to take the T or drive. Good design can last for centuries and can continue to pay long-term benefits at low cost. I’m not going to talk here about the design details. Please get in touch with me if you want to learn more and get involved. But just to speak to one of the issues, we’re spending a lot of money on a beautiful new building. We have a rare opportunity to create a public space and civic space in front of a T station and a new high school building that will serve as a gathering place for thousands of T riders and hundreds of students using the building. Would we really rather have the space out in front of it be taken up by nine cars sitting there baking in the sun under the current, as currently proposed? The T station is just part of a campus-wide expansion project, and I, I know that the Building Committee is under a lot of time pressure. I’m concerned that the committee as a whole might not be committed to the changes that have been proposed by the architects so far or open to further improvements. The Precinct 6 delegation and all of our neighbors who have welcomed the school expansion will be strong advocates for improving the station, and we need your support in making sure the Building Committee is, is listening. For the reasons that I’ve outlined, I had initially planned to abstain on warrant Article 11.
You have 45 seconds, Mr. Englander.
But I’m not advocating that. I want this process to continue to move forward in a positive way in partnership with the neighborhood. If you vote yes, and if the town approves warrant article, I would, I want it to be because the community is coming together to support improvements that have been made so far, and to make further progress, and to encourage the dedicated volunteers serving on the Building Committee to do the right thing. So I hope you’ll join the Precinct 6 delegation in advocating for a forward-looking station design that elevates the needs of BHS students and people taking the T. Let’s get this right. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Micklejohn.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator Randolph Micklejohn, a Town Meeting Member of Precinct 5, a Cypress Street resident, also a daily T rider at the Brookline Hills T Station and an architect. And I will edit a bit following Mr. Englander. I’m speaking in favor of this article, which would allow construction of part of the building, the 111 Cypress Building on MBTA property, because I, I also believe that the, the building-- the 111 Cypress Building on MBTA property, because I also believe that the Building Advisory Committee co-chairs will probably keep working towards a building and site design that provide adequate public access to the T station. As you heard from Mr. Englander, that is not where we were in March, and I'm not satisfied yet with the design of the T station, I'm not talking about the high school building, but it's no longer such a bad design that I would think about voting against the article in order to stop the construction. The new building at 111 Cypress is, will expand the campus of the high school, and the T station will end up in the middle, which is unusual, but the Brookline Hills T station is already unusual. If you look at the Brookline stations on the D-line, Longwood Village Hills, Beaconsfield Reservoir, and Chestnut Hill is not in Brookline, but a lot of Brookline residents use it, only Brookline Hills is accessible from only one side, the outbound side. Currently, you can walk onto the outbound platform anywhere along its length, 150 feet of open access from the Tappan side. And as Scott said, the design presented in March really lacked sufficient access. In the meetings since March, I think the project team has come to understand that adequate public access to the T station is after all a project requirement, because they have begun to show it in the design. And on April 23rd, those are the latest drawings, there is now 80 feet of access, which is more than in March, but it's significantly less than what we have now. And I want to talk about criticism of design, because in criticizing the design, I've met with a statement that public meetings were previously held, many of them, of course. And, you know, architecture is a profession, and when you have a serious conversation about whether an architect is doing a proper job, counting the public meetings is not what you do. What you do is you ask, did the architect demonstrate understanding of the design problem? Do they possess the experience and qualifications to design, in this case, a public transportation station? Did they exercise appropriate care in proposing a design? It's constructive, it's protective of the town's interests to ask these questions before the building is built, so that when the answer to one of these questions is no, the corrections can be made with less use of our resources. I believe the town's decision to site the building at the T platform means, as we say in the architecture business, that the town owns the problem of resolving access to the T and maintaining a reasonable functional level of access to the station. I think that's where the design is headed. Of course, that's going to go forward outside of town meeting, and if this station or public transportation generally matters to you, I hope you will attend the next meeting on Wednesday, June 12th. And please join me in supporting warrant Article 11.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll.
Yeah, Frank Carroll, Precinct 10. I'm just following up with a question that, kind of based on the comments of Scott and Randolph. I'm curious about the receptivity of the Building Committee to continue this process and consider more of the critique from the neighborhood group and the suggestions for better access to the, to the, to the T station.
Ms. Heller?
Nancy Heller for Board of Select, Select Board. We are always considering design elements in our meetings that we have. Our next meeting, Randolph was correct, is July 12th in the evening. We also have to be mindful, not only of the design elements, but also the budget. The budget was established at the time of the debt exclusion override, a year ago, yes, a year ago. And so we need to be careful to manage our resources within that, so that, for instance, some design elements cannot be changed so dramatically, because they are extremely costly, and we have to keep our promise to the voters. But yes, we do review the design elements on a regular basis, and we will continue to do that.
Mr. Davis? Why don't you come forward, Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jonathan Davis, Precinct 10. I have a question just about the wording. It talks about the town will acquire certain ground and air rights easements from the MBTA sufficient to allow the construction of the Brookline High School expansion and so on. Is it, is it necessary to mention, is it necessary to mention maintenance of the Brookline High School expansion after it's built, or is that unnecessary, given the, maybe physically it's unnecessary? I just, I was just curious about the, the lack of, the use of the term "maintenance" in an acquisition of an easement.
Nancy Heller again. I described what we would be, why we would need the particular easement, for what use, more because I wanted you to understand the issues, rather than, I mean, an easement is an easement, so you're going to be expected to be, do what you need to do on that easement. You don't have to spell it out, but I wanted you to understand why we would have an exclusive or a non-exclusive easement and for what piece.
Okay, so the use of the term "construction" in the resolution here, not the resolution in the, in the, in the vote, the use of the term "construction" of the, of the high school expansion is intended to also include an easement that would, that would deal with the need to repair the, for example, the fenestration and the pointing?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Richman?
Colin Richman, Precinct 6. I had a question about the last easement, and I should mention that this is my T stop too, so I'm quite familiar with it. For the exit onto Brinton has a very specific route, and it's kind of crooked and twisty. I know there have been discussions about other routes. Does that easement lock us into that particular alignment or to, or not?
Ms. Heller?
Nancy Heller. No, I don't believe so. I don't think that the police are going to be standing there arresting you for trespassing if you step over the line of an easement. Just, it's, it's, the purpose of it is to make sure that there is an emergency access from that T station, and to give a specific dimension to that, but I don't think that anyone would expect that you would necessarily know that or obey it as a person who is walking on it.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Khan.
Thank you, Janice Khan, Precinct 15. So Scott Englander's comment about cars baking in the sun reminds me that in Newton and at the schools in Newton, they are building PVC awnings over their parking lots to capture the power, solar power, and I just wonder whether that's something that the Building Committee has been in discussions about.
Ms. Heller?
Again, Nancy Heller. I don't believe so. It certainly is an idea worth exploring. I don't know, again, whether that would be in the budget or if something we could do as an add-on later to help us with our solar energy, but, and of course, that would mean you'd have a different look, it wouldn't be as open, so we'd have to consider all those issues, but it is an interesting idea.
Thank you, Mr. Burstein.
Michael A. Burstein, Precinct 12. I just wanted to check with Ms. Heller on the date of the design review meeting. I think she said a date in July, and I've heard it's a date in June.
It's June 12th.
June 12th. And I'd like to know, is this a, a meeting at which the public is welcome to make comments?
Oh, yes, we always have, I'd say 20 to 30 members of the public in our audience. So yes, we do welcome people to come and make comments.
So just for the record, people who wish to comment on the Brookline Hills MBTA-
Absolutely.
-thing can come on June 12th. At what time is that meeting?
It's usually at 7 o'clock in the school committee room on the fifth floor of Town Hall.
Thank you very much.
On the motion on page, on the pink supplement, including the maps on pages 2, 3, and 4 of the pink supplement, those in favor, please raise your hands. Those opposed? Motion carries by a vote of 200 to 1. So we proceed to Article 12, the motion under Article 12 is on page 12-3, moved by Ms. Hamilton, seconded by Ms. Benka, that we, the town authorized the Select Board to accept a grant of easements relating to the portions of land located at 20 Boylston Street. Ms. Hamilton? This also requires a two-thirds vote.
Good evening. Heather Hamilton for a unanimous Select Board. 20 Boylston Street is the site of a proposed mixed-use development, which received a special permit for construction pursuant to the town's design review and affordable housing provisions of its zoning bylaw. During the design phase of the project, with input from the neighbors, the design advisory team and the planning board, the owner agreed to increase the width of the sidewalks on Walnut Street and High Street by setting the building back in excess of the minimum setbacks and adding sidewalk area on its property. The owner also agreed to plant several street trees on the sidewalk. Without this additional sidewalk area provided by the owner, there is insufficient room for both the trees to be planted and safe pedestrian passage as part of this project. So again, a win-win. We move favorable action on this warrant article. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Benka.
Carla Benka, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 13, speaking for the Advisory Committee. By a vote of 18 to 0 to 1, the Advisory Committee recommends favorable action on the motion offered by the Select Board, and in expressing our support for this article, the Advisory Committee hopes that the Select Board will persuade the owner of the property to take on the responsibility of maintaining the street trees that will be planted along this portion of the public way. Thank you.
Thank you. On the motion on page 12-3, those in favor, please raise your hands. Those opposed? The vote is unanimous. We now turn to the Waldo Durgan articles 13 through 15. We will have a single vote, debate on all three of these articles. The, they're complicated, and they're located, for Article 13, the motion is on pages 13-24 through 32. It's moved by Mr. Green and seconded by Mr. Lynn Jones, that the town amend the zoning bylaw and zoning map as set forth on those pages. The motion under Article 14, that requires a two-thirds vote. The motion under Article 14 is found on pages 14-96 through 99, again moved by Mr. Green, seconded by Mr. Lynn Jones, to authorize the Select Board to enter into the necessary agreements and so forth, and the, including a tax certainty agreement, in the words of that motion. And Article 15, motion is on page 15-14, starts on 15-14, that the town accept a restrictive covenant entitled Tax Certainty Agreement, in the form of the draft, substantially the form of the draft attached to the motion, moved again by Mr. Green, seconded by Mr. Lynn Jones. I call on Mr. Waschinsky, who has 10 minutes. And Ms. Sunny Lee, if you're in the auditorium, would you come forward and sit in the front
Hi, everybody. I'm Neil Waschinsky, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 5, and Chair of the Coolidge Corner Study Committee, and I'm speaking for the committee. As town meeting members, we have moments that we can do something really important and meaningful, something that will shape the future direction of a key part of town, something that we can look back and say we've made a difference. And we have that opportunity here with the Waldo Durgan mixed-use package, which includes Articles 13, 14, and 15. These articles are presented as an integrated package. Article 13 is the zoning that defines legal parameters, including mass, height, usage, and benefits. Article 14 authorizes the Select Board to sign a memorandum of understanding with further obligations, benefits, and protections. And then Article 15 authorizes the Select Board to enter into a tax certainty agreement to guarantee the receipt of taxes from the property for 95 years. If one article fails to pass, the entire package fails. So what are we talking about? And I'm going to shift positions here, so I'm going to talk from the side, this will be a little awkward, but we'll do it anyway. Okay, so this is the property. Get your bearings. Pleasant Street, John Street, Beacon Street. And this is another view of the property, a site map. Over here is Brookline Booksmith, Green Street condos, the Coolidge Corner Library is over here, and Pelham Hall. So we, we all now, whoops, we all now know where the property is. What you see here is what the current zoning allows. And this actually would be pretty good. If you look at Pelham Hall, the height of Pelham Hall over here, compare it to the height of the allowed building, this is a massing diagram, it seems like it's in scale, but it was set this way many years ago, and the property has sat fallow for that many years, and it's, it's not financially feasible to build at that scale. So the site was studied, and there was a prior committee that didn't come to a recommendation, and the zoning stayed constant, and what was proposed was a 40B, as you see here. And this is a pretty big, massive building. We looked at it, there was an editorial in the Globe about it, and we approached the developer and asked if they would engage with us to see if there was something better that we could do with the site. And after some back and forth, the developer, Chestnut Hill Realty, agreed to meet with us, sit down, and have a negotiation. So we put together a committee, whoops, a pretty broadly represented committee. The committee met 37 times, and we had community meetings, whoops, lost my place. And it was a large committee, but we tried to cover all the bases. And at the time, we were studying two projects, a second project at 1200 Beacon Street, the Holiday Inn site, but that, that project dropped out, so the committee started focusing entirely on the Coolidge Corner site. Whoops, come on. There we go. So this is the result. We now have two buildings, and the placement of the massing has improved, but the overall gross floor, floor area ratio is about the same. The really big change is that about half the square footage is a hotel. And now we get into, why is this proposal better than 40B? Come on. What, okay, I'm, okay, I'm going the wrong way. Okay, so this is an outline of the, of why we think it's better. So first, the town has control, including post-construction control, and each of these points will be considered by- points will be considered by, will be explained by some other speakers coming on after me. We have strong design guidelines, which will be explained by Steve Hyken of the Planning Board. We have environmental sustainability issues and concerns that are being addressed, and Wernaloei will be explaining some of those. We have smarter, more adaptable parking infrastructure, and I'll talk a little about that in a couple of slides. There's a positive fiscal impact for the town, and we'll talk about that. And then there are neighborhood benefits, which I'll summarize, boy, here. So the first neighborhood benefit is the sidewalks on John and Pleasant Street will be activated. Right now, they're dead. There's going to be retail, cafe, WeWork space on Pleasant Street, and then the sidewalk on John Street will be activated with residential entrances. There'll be landscaped, open space on and off-site, a pocket park at the corner of John and Green is going to be expanded. There's going to be a Blue Bike Station sponsored by Chestnut Hill and onsite. There's going to be parking spaces for adjacent residents, and hotel meeting space is going to be available for community groups. With smarter, more adaptable parking infrastructure, the park, there's less parking than 40B. We're trying not to overbuild. The parking is going to be underground, so it won't be visible on the streetscape. And there's going to be optimized parking infrastructure, and the parking can be converted later to other kinds of space without increasing, without affecting the floor area ratio. So we're trying to build in flexibility into the permitting. Okay. Positive fiscal impact. From the existing use, which is pretty blighted, this parcel, if this project goes through, will yield, we estimate, about $3 million a year additional taxes for the town. We also estimate about $1.65 million in additional taxes over the 40B. So the 40B, yes, the 40B would have a positive impact, but this will have about $1.65 million more. And then there'll be less demand for town services. Whoops, boy. So what are we talking about? Let's take a walk around Coolidge Corner, and these are some perspectives. This is looking from the Brookline Bank at the SS Pierce Building. You can, well, whoops, that's why it's not working. I have it upside down. Okay. Okay, there we go. Okay, that's the residential building, the hotel. There we go. Okay, so this is across, this is across the street from the Capital One Cafe. Notice Pelham Hall over here. Residential building, the hotel. Another view, this is from across the street from where Nina's is now. And in this perspective, whoops, sorry, it looks a little higher than Pelham Hall, and it's about four stories higher than Pelham Hall, but the perspective, it doesn't seem that way. This is looking at it from John Street. This is the home of one of the speakers who's going to be speaking after me, Lauren Bernard. And it's following the setbacks of the existing townhouses. And this is looking from a little beyond Sussman House. This is Sussman House right here. Sussman House is nine stories, and this is the Coolidge Corner Library. And this is a site, a site layout, which shows the circulation. So this is coming in from Pleasant Street, this is coming in from John Street, and it's going to be one-way from Pleasant, except for hotel deliveries and existing alley use. This is deliveries to the stores in the back and to the hotel. And coming out into John Street, this will be two ways, and there'll be a potential connection to the Brookline Booksmith. That's currently being discussed. It's not a guarantee, though. One of the things that doesn't compare favorably is the model traffic generation. Commercial uses, this is between this project and 40B, commercial uses have more trips than a residential use. One of the major impact, once the major impact project permitting begins, an updated traffic study, an independent traffic review will take place. However, based on initial review by our traffic consultant, and similar to other large developments, we've already gotten CHR to agree to the following mitigation items. A shared Blue Bike Station, which I mentioned, crosswalks, area sidewalk bumpouts, if we decide that's what we want, funding a bike lane concept for John Street, funding a widened sidewalk plan on Harvard Street, and annual monitoring. My time is almost up, so one of the last things you need to know is that this zoning has a sunset provision. It expires on 6/1/2020. So here we are. We were all hoping that we could do something smaller, but our financial consultant, Pam McKinney, validated that the margins on this project are razor-thin and that we've pushed the developer as far as we could. After hearing from some in the neighborhood and others on the committee objecting to the height, we looked for ways to reduce the height. And this is how the payment to the Housing Trust Fund of $3.275 million came to be. The payment reduces the project height by one story, and Roger Blood will be addressing that. Some key points from some of the other speakers. I mentioned Mr. Loie and Mr. Hyken, but also Mr. Blood will be talking about the Housing Trust Fund and how we're handling the affordable housing component. We're going to hear support from some butters. The key, the first butter will be Lauren Bernard, who is the closest to butter, and then Paul Sainer, co-chair of the Economic Development Advisory Board, will be talking about the economic impact. So the mixed-use project is a balance of competing interests: town control, strong design guidelines, neighborhood vitality and benefits, environmental sustainability, and a positive fiscal impact for the town. All this competing with a developer's desire for a reasonable return. Is this project perfect? No. But I think we've done a good job balancing these interests and producing the framework for a signature financially feasible project in the flagship commercial district in our town. On behalf of the committee, I urge you to vote favorable action on all three warrant articles.
Is Ms. Sunny Lee in the auditorium?
Lynda Olson Pelkey, Precinct 2. As a member of the Coolidge Corner Study Committee, I wanted to have a chance to put this zoning proposal in a broader context and share some of my concerns. While I'm speaking about some of the negatives of the proposed zoning change, I want you to know that I and other committee members and town staff worked very hard to make this the best project we could, and we took great care to try to safeguard the town. It's no secret that Chestnut Hill Realty has used the threat of a 40B to leverage this large upzoning. It's becoming a familiar playbook. After hearing about the numerous 40B proposals from Chestnut Hill, my first thought was to organize a protest at their office. So unlike the many commercial zoning overlay districts that the town has negotiated in the past, we are even less able to shape the proposal to gain appropriate scale, better building forms, or more robust public benefits. As someone who has served on many of these zoning change committees, I found this one to be frustrating and difficult due to our lack of leverage. From an urban design point of view, I think this project is just plain strange, with tall, bulky buildings rising behind the single-story buildings lining Beacon and Harvard, and a 13-story building sitting next to three-story residential buildings on John Street. The bulk and density of the buildings and uses, especially locating the hotel within the interior of the block, bring all sorts of access and circulation issues, both within the project and beyond. As Town Meeting Member Waschinsky, I almost called you the board member, mentioned, you should know that the traffic from the mixed-use project is estimated to be over 2,100 daily vehicle trips compared to 870 estimated for the 40B. In the context of the extremely constrained Waldo Street, Pleasant Street, and Beacon Street intersection, you know the one where the tree volcano is? This vehicle trip difference is significant. Besides less traffic, you should know that the 40B would add 60 units of affordable housing priced at 50% of area median income, and the entire project could be added to the SHI. If we end up passing the zoning change, I'm calling on everyone here to pay attention and be involved as this project goes through design review and permitting. We need to watchdog the process to make sure the promise of the design guidelines are fulfilled. And then, once the project opens, we need to monitor and respond if travel conditions deteriorate significantly, as I suspect they will, be it for cars, bicycles, scooters, or pedestrians. So we can be annoyed and even angry that a state law, 40B, was used in this way, but really, we need to be honest and admit that some of the blame for finding ourselves vulnerable to the 40B maneuver must rest with us. We have not made progress on implementing our affordable housing production plan, although the reinvigoration of the Brookline Improvement Coalition is a promising development in this regard. The Coolidge Corner District planning process started in 2006 and served to catalog concerns and goals, but it did not yield a substantive zoning change. Had we been able to proactively plan for Coolidge Corner, we could have laid out a vision for a much more cohesive and well-designed business district, one that would have provided some opportunities for commercial development. Our current zoning prohibits many of the features we love about our local commercial areas.
Yeah, one minute.
Is that my six minutes?
Oh, I'm sorry, you have two minutes.
Thank you. Now that I'm off track, okay. Our current zoning prohibits many of the features we love about our local commercial areas, and it is unrealistically restrictive for the economics of our age. Tackling our planning challenges is a matter of both resources and political will. I hope Brookline will be able to get serious about proactive planning and zoning. We need to harness these tools to protect what we love, encourage growth where appropriate, and telegraph our values and commitment to excellence to prospective developers. Otherwise, we remain vulnerable and threatened with uncontrolled and incompatible projects. We are voting on a zoning change that more than triples the development rights on these parcels. The new floor area ratio will be 6.0. The residential tower will be 13 stories tall, and the project includes a massive underground parking garage mere steps from the T. This garage is hardly an appropriate response to our climate crisis, our current congested traffic conditions, or modern trends in transportation. Such an upzoning creates a precedent for height and density in Coolidge Corner, and we will likely see increased development pressures based on the altered expectation of landowners and developers. Some of our cherished small businesses will be displaced. While I agree that reasonable people can see the mixed-use project as being advantageous in this case, it is still disappointing that this is the project coming to transform our Coolidge Corner. I hope we can do better from now on.
Thank you, Mr. Blood.
First, I'll make sure I have this right side up. I'm Roger Blood. I serve on the Housing Advisory Board. Okay. Up in the face here. I'm Roger Blood, is that better? I serve on the Housing Advisory Board and also the Coolidge Corner Study Committee. I hope when you vote later this evening that you share the enthusiasm of both the HAB and the Study Committee for the affordable housing component of this complicated and important project. The HAB oversees both the inclusionary zoning part of the bylaw, as well as serving as the trustees for the town's Affordable Housing Trust. And this project includes a heavy dose of both of those things. The basic inclusionary zoning bylaw requires that 15% of a new project's housing units be onsite and affordable. So in this proposal, this mixed-use proposal, out of 143 rental apartments, 21 of those would normally be required by inclusionary zoning to be built onsite. But in this instance, the bylaw has a very rarely-used provision that allows alternatives to the strict application of the onsite affordable formula, which include possible provision of affordable units offsite or cash payment into the Brookline Affordable Housing Trust Fund. In this process, as Neil mentioned, stakeholders thought, not surprisingly, this project's just too high and it's too big, and can we find any creative ways to make it even any amount shorter or smaller while retaining its financial feasibility? And the HAB agreed to consider a possible negotiated alternative to having all 21 units onsite, which would, by the simple arithmetic, translate it physically into about two stories of total height, whatever that height might be. We looked at and rejected early on a proposal for existing offsite affordable units in lieu of the onsite, but the HAB did agree and engage in negotiation for a possible partial buyout of the 21 required affordable units. In the course of the public discussions, we heard from two very, very different perspectives, understandable but incompatible. The first was if we really want to make the building shorter, let's cut it by all two stories and take all of the affordable units offsite and put it all into a trust fund. And the other was we really should make all the affordables onsite and not respond in any way to reduce the building's height. The end result from the HAB's perspective was to recommend a compromise, which the Study Committee agreed with. And it involved a negotiation with Chestnut Hill Realty for a partial buyout of the 21 units and a payment to the trust fund, as Neil mentioned, of $3.275 million. The buyout would leave 11 of the 21 required affordable units onsite, a slight majority, scattered throughout the building required, and 10 of the units would be not placed onsite, but in lieu of that, a payment of the $3.275 into the trust fund, which would round out to, divide by 10, is about, just about $330,000 cash payment per unit. And that would allow the height of the building to be reduced by one story. With my limited time, I can't explain to you exactly how the figure was arrived at, but if you have questions and answers, we can certainly do that. Basically, the figure was developed independently from Chestnut Hill Realty, and in meeting with them, that figure was not adjusted to what our people are experts, Mike Jacobs and Ken Lewis mainly, and validated by Pam McKinney, who you've already heard is our outside expert. The figure we came to is the figure that was where we ended up. Now, the bylaw also requires that any alternative Now, the bylaw also requires that any alternative, any such alternative plan to the 15% onsite requires, and I’m just going to quote, “shall provide a greater affordable housing benefit to the town”
Give one minute.
...than would be provided onsite. So I hope in the remaining less than a minute, I can satisfy you that this requirement will be accomplished in spades. The Housing Trust Fund has a very good track record in creating good affordable housing by effectively leveraging the available funds, local funds, that are in the trust. And this is included working with mission-based nonprofit developers that are able to bring considerable state and federal subsidies to their proposed projects. And so by the time they approached the town and the trust fund, we are asked to bring the last dollar in to make very good projects feasible in very expensive Brookline. Our record includes a number of projects that you’re familiar with, but in recent years, we’ve deployed $9 million of trust fund money into five projects, including St. Aden’s, Olmsted Hill, Dummer Street, Beale Street, and soon to come at JFK Crossing, the JCHE Senior Housing Project at the KI site. They total 180 affordable units, so simple division, 9,180 units. The average cost to the trust fund to create or produce an affordable unit in Brookline has been $50,000. The highest per-unit cost for the trust fund use of money was a little over $100,000 at St. Aden’s, and there was some interesting conditions there. Many of these projects were less than $50,000. The JCHE, for example, will be about $30,000.
Please conclude, Mr. Blood.
Yes. So, again, the short arithmetic is if we get $330,000 per unit into the trust and we can produce affordable units between $50,000 and $100,000, we can leverage that money from three times to six times the amount of units, admittedly over a period of time, relative to the amount of, to the 10 units that would have been built onsite. I will end here by only saying there’s another subject you feel free to ask questions about, and that is the status of the town and the various projects that are in the queue.
We’re going to have questions solely limited to this project, Mr. Blood. Ms. Mottner.
My name is Rebecca Plautmau, and I’m a Town Meeting Member from Precinct 11. For my day job, I develop affordable housing. And as a developer, someone who understands the complexities of balancing zoning, financial negotiations, and market analysis, I deeply appreciate the work of the committee that created Articles 13 to 15. As a taxpayer, I’m glad to see significant commercial development with a hedge against conversion to nonprofit use. As someone committed to creating and preserving affordable housing, and who works with the intricacies of financing and leveraging these dollars on a daily basis in an economically-integrated Brookline, I do not support the approach to affordable housing in this agreement. I’m glad that Chestnut Hill Realty will be creating 11 affordable units onsite, but I disagree with the committee that providing $3.25 million in cash provides a greater affordable housing benefit for the town than creating the additional 10 units onsite. There are several reasons for this. The primary one is that although the financial contribution does follow the inclusionary zoning bylaws terms, the amount that is being contributed to the town is actually far less than the actual value of the 10 additional affordable units. It is technically true, that it is true that these funds will help create more affordable units, but the leveraging analysis is not quite as simple as outlined earlier. These additional units will not be a night increase to the regional inventory. Mostly, what we’ll do is shift these from another community to Brookline. Now, that’s good for us, but it’s not the same as adding 10 new affordable units. In addition, it will be a long time until these units materialize. I’d be happy to go into the details of affordable housing finance and politics and why I do not believe that the leverage argument is as strong as articulated by Mr. Blood. It would take more than five minutes to explain, and this is only one portion of the articles before, so I won’t delve into it now, but I’m more than happy to talk through the specifics of how these partnerships work, how the financing works, and why I disagree that the approach in this agreement to anyone who’s interested. My purpose in standing here tonight is not to convince you to vote against Articles 13 to 15. It is to begin to explain these issues so that we are better prepared next time. In addition, talking with members of the committee, and I’m grateful to Ken Lewis and others, about the specifics has helped me understand some of the pitfalls and inadequacies of our current inclusionary zoning ordinance. I don’t think it protects us in the way that it is intended to. I understand that the HAB has begun a process to revise and strengthen the town’s inclusionary zoning ordinance. I look forward to that process and hope that at a town meeting soon, we will be able to adopt a new inclusionary zoning ordinance that protects the town’s interests more fully and provides more appropriate benefits for the town. Thank you.
Mr. Green.
Town Moderator, Bernard Green, Chair of the Select Board, speaking for unanimous board in support of warrant articles 13, 14, and 15. I want to thank Neil Wyszynski, Chair of the Coolidge Corner Study Committee, who has worked long and difficult hours in apparently 37 meetings to bring this complex project to the point as a sophisticated mixed-use hotel and residential development project for Brookline, meeting many, maybe not all, needs of the town with respect to housing, commercial development, et cetera. Roger Blood spoke about an important piece of this, and that is the part of the affordable housing issue that involves contribution to the Housing Trust Fund of $3,275,000. I’d like to suggest that people look in their materials at page 13-15 for a little more detailed statement of the benefits that we receive from the work of the Housing Advisory Paul Sainer will also talk shortly regarding the benefits in terms of taxes and impact on services of this project, and that’s always an important issue for the town, given our current, not strapped, but difficult or challenging, put it that way, financial condition, and the need to assure the residents and taxpayers of our town that we are doing everything we can to generate revenue, to take some of the burden off of especially the residential property tax. In my presentation, I want to highlight three aspects of the project that I think provide additional benefits to the town that may not be readily apparent. First, the residential building is designed for and will be marketed by Chestnut Hill Realty to empty nesters, as they say. Presumably, that’s middle-aged couples without school-aged children, though some of them will probably have a 20-something child still living with them. I see that many of you are like me with that situation. As many of you may know, among my housing concerns for Brookline are two things. First, workforce housing so that our employees and other middle-class families have opportunities to live in Brookline. The Housing Trust Fund and the additional money from this development can help us tackle that difficult problem. We cannot be a community that is comprised of high-income and a few low-income residents. It’s not sustainable without that middle-class part of the community. Second, and this is maybe just important to me, but it’s very important to me, racially integrating Brookline by practical steps to mitigate the effects of past intentional segregated actions by federal, state, and local authorities, banks, and others that created segregated black communities in Boston and segregated white communities in the suburbs, including Brookline, and we all benefit from that unfortunate situation. I’m working with the Diversity Office in developing an initiative of the town to help market Brookline to diverse potential residents, particularly professionals recruited from outside the state to hospitals, universities, law firms, financial institutions, and other high-paying employees, who we ought to be marketing to because they can’t afford to live in Brookline in many cases and have a real reason to live here with our great transportation access to the surrounding towns. We are also encouraging private developers to step up and make sure that their marketing is directed to a diverse pool of potential renters for homeowners, and this is where Chestnut Hill comes in. We have had informal discussions and agreements from nonprofit developers of senior housing to do just that. I’ve also spoken to Mr. Zucker, and I hope he doesn’t mind me mentioning this, about this, and he has stated that such an initiative, marketing initiative, is consistent with the values of Chestnut Hill Realty and will be included in his empty nesters marketing. So the Waldo-Durgan Project can play an important role in both these important issues. Second, the Memorandum of Agreement has a unique provision that addresses sustainability in a more innovative way than is typically addressed. Chestnut Hill Realty will enter into a voluntary sustainability partnership with the town to create replicable best practices in energy usage, greenhouse gas emissions, and facility operations, and incorporate them into the design at early stages when feasible. This is unusual in these type of developments, and what’s important about this is the partnership between Chestnut Hill Realty and the town, and including in the process, developing new and innovative approaches to sustainability, bringing that issue to the forefront in more creative ways than maybe we have in the past. Third, this development is ideally situated to minimize the need of residents or hotel guests to travel by automobile. It’s a perfect location for this type of development. It’s a block from the Green Line, I know we all hate the Green Line, but it has potential. And it takes you straight into downtown Boston. And it’s also a block from the number 66 bus, and if you’ve ever ridden that, it’s even worse than the Green Line, but it goes straight into Harvard Square.
Love Boat.
Love Boat. Residents who work in Cambridge or Boston have quick and easy access to those areas, and guests of the hotel can similarly tend to their business by easy public transportation. This makes the Transportation Demand Management Plan of the project a practical way to reduce automobile traffic and work towards our zero emission goals for Brookline. The foregoing are just three of the benefits of this mixed-use development in my view. On the whole, this will be a great addition to the town and a benefit to all of its residents. I don’t think it’s perfect, but it looks pretty good. Failure to pass warrant articles 13, 14, and 15 will not return us to the status quo that we have been living with for years, an old garage, stores in a rundown building, and commercial lots that return little revenue to the town. That’s the status quo, but we won’t go back to that. Rather, failure to pass these warrant articles will result in loss of control over a centrally-located commercial site to a large 40B project with 299 units of studio, one, two, and three-bedroom apartments. We will also lose all the benefits that have been worked into the mixed-use development by the zoning overlay district, the Memorandum of Agreement, and the Tax Certainty Agreement that other people will talk about in more detail. The town is getting a great deal with the mixed-use development, which is why the Select Board unanimously voted to approve warrant articles 13, 14, and 15. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Levin.
Hi, I’m Carol Levin, speaking for the Advisory Committee. Articles 13, 14, and 15 represent the culmination of a comprehensive two-year planning process by the Coolidge Corner Study Committee, a process charged with facilitating the redevelopment of a prominent but somewhat rundown location in the heart of the town’s major commercial and residential district. The goal is a redevelopment which reflects the town of Brookline’s values, a redevelopment which balances respect for the character of Coolidge Corner while broadening the town’s tax base, a redevelopment which will be a good neighbor to current businesses and residents while offering new residential options in an increasingly tight and costly market, all while supporting the local businesses which make Coolidge Corner such a vibrant and important place in our town. These articles represent the balanced optimization of 10 distinct but interrelated objectives or benefits to the town. The first of these is a development of appropriate size, a development of appropriate building height, of appropriate gassing, and of appropriate parking configuration, a development that will bring new residential units and affordable housing, which will bring public realm improvements, a positive fiscal impact on the town, financial sustainability, and environmental sustainability, and pre- and post-approval process controls and protections. We may differ in the relative importance we assign to each of these 10 benefits. Some of you I know would prefer a smaller development, others would like more affordable housing, still others would prefer a bigger boost to the town’s tax revenues. The challenge was to try and maximize each of these 10 objectives while ending up with a financially feasible redevelopment project, a project for which the developer can obtain financing. The challenge was to avoid designing by committee a car that could not drive. The Advisory Committee did discuss these trade-offs. The number of affordable housing units was questioned, the need for both more and less parking was discussed, the certainty of the revenue stream to the town challenged, further minimization of the development’s environmental footprint was encouraged, while reinsurance were sought and received regarding the town’s ability to influence the final site plan and building design post the warrant articles approval. And while these 10 objectives and benefits were being considered, the Advisory Committee, as did the Coolidge Corner Study Committee before it, kept in mind the alternative to this mixed-use development, a 12-story 40B containing 299 residential units which can circumvent town zoning. Under the 40B process, the town will not have the ability to achieve these objectives. There will be no public realm improvements, the onsite parking will be restricted to the building’s residents, we will have no ongoing influence over the project’s design, nor be able to obtain a commitment that it be sustainably designed and built. The town will not be able to influence the location and unit mix of the affordable housing component, and the tax revenues will be roughly half of those projected for the mixed-use development. And finally, the town’s receipt of those revenues is not guaranteed in the event that the property is someday sold to a nonprofit entity. The ability to obtain and optimize these 10 objectives and benefits carried great weight for the Advisory Committee. Finally, I want to underscore the importance to the AC of both the town’s ongoing control and protections under these warrant articles and the project’s positive financial impact on the town. The controls and protections include the special permit process, the detailed design guidelines, and the draft Memorandum of Agreement to be authorized by warrant article 14, and the 95-year Tax Certainty Agreement in warrant article 15. You heard in Sean Lynn Jones’s budget statement about some of the long-term fiscal problems facing the town. As the town’s Finance Committee, the AC is very aware of these budget challenges and the need to increase tax revenue. You’ll hear shortly from Paul Sainer of EDIV the details of the project’s positive impact on Brookline’s fiscal health. By three separate votes, the AC voted 19 to 0 to 3 to recommend favorable action on warrant articles 13, 14, and 15 as presented. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hyken.
Steve Hyken, Chair, speaking for the Planning Board. The Planning Board unanimously concur- The Planning Board unanimously concurs with the Select Board, Advisory Committee, EDAB, as you'll hear, and others in supporting the creation of the Waldo Durgan Overlay District to facilitate the proposed mixed-use development of this unique and uniquely underutilized site right in the heart of Coolidge Corner. I'm going to hope to not repeat many of the things you've already heard about this project, but focus on the Planning Board's perspective, which is specifically Article 13 and the zoning aspect of it, and tell you a little bit about the process of creating an overlay zoning district, why it's done, and where this process will go going forward. The town zoning by law in Section 5.06 permits the creation of special zoning districts where potential development issues and opportunities, and they're both obviously present here, require some specific and detailed neighborhood, district, or site planning and design review. And the objectives of a special zoning district are to help ensure orderly and planned growth and development, the conservation of adjacent residential neighborhoods, and the economic viability of commercial areas. And in this case, the Waldo Durgan District has been the result of, as you've heard, a two-year, 37-meeting process that was both inclusive, thoughtful, and creative. And by the way, many of the members of this committee, some of them have spoken, and many of them are here, and they should be thanked for their two years of effort. That committee included four architects. I'm the Chair of the zoning board. One of my colleagues, Linda Hamlin, is one of those architects on the board. I'm also an urban designer and parenthetically was concerned about the idea of such substantial massing in the rear of the existing street-front, low-rise buildings. And I was pretty well convinced by the extensive modeling of this project from all angles that a project of this scale can work in its proposed location. That study committee looked at many permutations of this project, starting with a 20-story 40B project, even bigger than the one that you saw. And we have ended up with a mixed-use development, which I think is financially, functionally, and urbanistically a great improvement over the 40B, and will meet all of the town's goals and requirements, including those of the affordable housing constituency. And I should add that I'm the Planning Board's representative on the Housing Advisory Board, and I do concur with Roger Blood's presentation that this mix of onsite and funds contributed to the Housing Trust Fund are a very good solution to a difficult problem. This mixed-use development will make significant improvements to the public realm, both within and off-site, including the conversion of that small John Street parking lot to a pocket park. It will create publicly accessible amenities for the neighborhood. It will address sustainability goals and provide all parking and underground spaces which can be adapted to other uses if that parking turns out to be more than is needed. If this mixed-use project goes forward with a positive vote tonight, it will be subject to a detailed set of design guidelines that go beyond the language of the overlay district and establish detailed standards for massing, articulation, and materials, fenestration, and sustainability. The guidelines specifically consider the pedestrian experience, addressing public access opportunities, the character of building entries, and ground floor uses. And these guidelines were created by a subcommittee of the Coolidge Corner Study Committee and were reviewed by and approved by the Planning Board two months ago in March. The next phase of review of this mixed-use development will include the creation of a design advisory team appointed by the Planning Board. If you don't know about this, DATs typically include several members of the Planning Board, as well as a number of local design professionals and neighborhood residents. The DAT will be guided by the design guidelines, as will the developers and architects of the project. Furthermore, if you're not familiar with the process, DAT meetings are always open to the public, and questions and comments are invited from anyone attending. And even though the appointed members of the DAT, you know, serve a specific function, they don't vote on a project, and public comments are included in the meeting records and are passed along to the development team. So it's a very inclusive process, and it eventually comes back to the full Planning Board. This process has worked well in other recent large-scale projects, such as Brookline Place, River Road, Homewood Suites, and Cleveland Circle, as well as at my own first involvement with a DAT about 20-some years ago, which was the design and planning of the Marriott Courtyard in Coolidge Corner. Developers, their architects, and community members alike have consistently acknowledged that the projects that go through the DAT process are significantly improved in their massing, design, functionality, and their fit within the neighborhood context. And the Planning Board would expect that the same thing will happen at Waldo Durgan. If this is not approved, we will be back, as you've heard, to facing a large 40B development. All of the leverage of the town that's been gained through this Coolidge Corner Study Committee process of engagement between the designer and developer and community will have been lost, and the Planning Board in the town will have little leverage and be looking at a project over which we have little or no control over planning, design, or zoning. So the Planning Board unanimously recommends favorable action on Article 13.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Mr. Sainer?
Paul Sainer, Precinct 13, co-chair of EDAB, which was founded by former Superintendent of Schools Bob Spurber. After Proposition 2 and 1/2, as a resident, he was very concerned about maintaining municipal services, and he felt that the town needed economic development and specifically new commercial tax growth. One of the many benefits for the proposed upzoning is exactly what Bob envisioned. The present parcels throw off about $300,000 of taxes. That's expected to increase by more than 10-fold to $3.3 million, and the increment on that is $3 million of new tax growth. Those estimates are based upon conservative market assumptions presently for rents and development costs. Now, the mixed-use project consists of 43% commercial, but yet the commercial component generates 65% of the overall taxes. How can that be? There's two reasons. One, the commercial tax rate is 64% greater than the residential tax rate. And two, due to the hotel, there will be the availability of the room options excise tax, which is equal to 6% of gross. Those taxes will be locked down via a tax certainty agreement for 95 years, binding on successors and assigns, and that's set forth in Article 15. The benefits from commercial development are very positive on the net fiscal bottom-line basis, for the very simple reason that commercial tenants demand much less of municipal services. The budget that we voted the other night had fully loaded 63% for services demanded almost exclusively by residents, meaning schools, parks, and libraries. The mixed-use option has 156 fewer residential units comprising 262 fewer bedrooms. Turning to the hotel with discretionary spending coming into Coolidge Corner, we believe that that will help support our internet beleaguered, cherished, locally-owned merchants. And David Washinsky, who is the president of the Coolidge Corner Merchants Association and has an undergraduate degree in physics, he set out to do a regression analysis correlating the sales at his store, Eureka Puzzles, with the Marriott, and concluded there was a high degree of correlation. So hotel patrons do help. There's a couple of features to this project that I think will also help the commercial district. The coworking space will provide a live-work opportunity for not only residents within the project, but for nearby neighbors to hopefully incubate new businesses that can be grown in town. I also want to highlight the connectivity through the site via the pedestrian easement, which, when the Brookline-Booksmith connection happens, and I am told with a high degree of assurance that that will, not just by the developer, but by the building owner, that's going to help with the over-vitality of the district. We've been talking quite a bit about debt exclusion overrides. The $3 million, based upon the most recent long-term borrowing cost of the town, 3%, would yield in bond proceeds $52.7 million. At 5%, that would yield $42.8 million. So that underscores the value of new commercial tax growth. And unlike a bond exclusion override, that income stream 25 years out will be available for other municipal purposes. Now, there's been a significant opportunity cost to the commercial tax base as a result of 40Bs. Of the 14 active 40Bs, seven of those, including Waldo Durgan, are on commercial sites. I should point out that 70% of the active 40Bs are in Coolidge Corner along Harvard Street heading north, that whole corridor. So I agree with my good friend Linda Pelkey that the town needs more proactive, long-term planning, and EDAB is all in on that. Please check out our five-year work plan on our website. I'm going to respectfully disagree with Linda on a couple of points. One, that this creates a precedent. I frankly think the town meeting is far too sharp to not forget the unique circumstances that are before us today. Also, Linda suggested that we didn't get as much as we did with other commercial developments that you've approved. Pam McKinney, who was the consultant here, was the same consultant in other projects, and Linda totally discounts the fact that Pam's analysis concluded that the return to Chestnut Hill Realty is below what is typical for other developers, and really, only because of their long-term portfolio profile does it make sense for them. Ms. McKinney, by the way, is consulting with the City of Boston on redoing their inclusionary zoning, just to give you a sense of her stature and independence from developers. So in conclusion, I want to say that it is indisputable that this structured negotiation alternative with the zoning protections in Article 13 and the memorandum of agreement, which will go on record in Article 14, provide the town with considerably better alternatives than the 40B. And I want to point out that of the 56 votes that have been cast to date from the various boards and commissions, there's only been one dissenting vote. So I urge you all to vote favorable action on this suite of warrant articles. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Lowey.
I'm Werner Lowey, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 13. Most of the discussion about this development has revolved around design issues and affordable housing. Environmental issues have been mentioned a little, and that's what I'm most concerned about, as they're fairly narrowly defined, particularly the climate change issues. I have not been directly involved in the process here in any way, but I have watched it from a distance, and I want to make sure a couple of points don't go unnoticed. First, though, I think we should acknowledge that this is taller, this is bigger than any of us would like, but that's looking at it from a neighborhood or even a town-wide perspective, which of course is very important. But the environmental or climate change perspective is broader than that. I don't even have to ask you to think globally, just to think regionally. From a regional perspective, this is smart growth. It's housing that's near transit, it's near jobs, it's near all sorts of services. It's exactly the opposite of sprawl. And as a region, as a culture, this is exactly the kind of building we need to do to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. If this were a terrible building, if it were an energy hog, it would still be a big problem. But it's the opposite. As you know, because of votes in town meeting, the town has begun to build new schools to high energy efficiency standards, much higher than the state imposes. And that, in this situation, as Bernard Green mentioned, has allowed the town to say, "Do as we do." And we've been able to negotiate with the developer to build this building to higher efficiency standards than would otherwise be required. Similarly, there's been attention to other environmental details. I won't go into all of them, but for instance, again, as Neil Washinsky mentioned, the parking is unbundled. That is, someone renting an apartment will have to pay extra for a parking space. So there won't be extra spaces that no one uses, or people won't be tempted to hold on to their cars just because they have a free space. And in the same way, if needs change, as they're likely to because of autonomous vehicles or all kinds of other things, the negotiations here have ensured that there'll be flexibility to use the parking space for the public, or for neighbors, or even for something other than parking. So that's good for the environment. And at least as important, I think, is the precedent this sets for dealing with future developers, the idea that the town will negotiate around sustainability issues. So I hope you'll join me in voting yes on these warrant articles. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bernard.
So now everybody knows where I live, huh? My name is Lauren Bernard. I'm a precinct A to town meeting member, and I was a member of the Coolidge Corner Study Committee. And full disclosure, I attended 36 of the 37 meetings over two and a half years. I want to thank my co-members of the committee, who, most of whom I did not know, except for the town meeting members from adjacent precincts. I would like to tell you all they are a very smart and talented bunch of architects, urban planners, attorneys, engineers, et cetera, and I am proud to have been asked to be on this committee. I want to also thank all of the members, including Neil Washinsky for his leadership in chairing the committee, and especially Kara Bruton, our town's Economic Development Director, for her tireless work, her due diligence, and fairness to all parties. It was a pleasure to work with her. I want to begin, well, I've begun already, but I want to share a very short anecdote about my son. My son Luke is now almost 11, and he has always hated change, hates it. Before he could talk, he would cry piteously when we would visit new places or new people, when we traded in our first car, when we got him his first big-boy bike after a little-boy bike because he couldn't stand the change. And when he finally had the words to articulate how he felt, Luke said these very words to me: "Mommy, new things are scary. Changes are scary. I want everything to stay the same." He was about three and a half. As someone like myself, who generally has thrived on change, I sympathize, but I honestly could not identify with his feelings, even if this was my son. So I explained, and I continue to reiterate to my son, that only by embracing change can we shape our future, and this is one of the opportunities we have with this project. Tonight, I stand before you with the same sentiment, and I ask for your support for Articles 13, 14, and 15 concerning the building of this mixed-use development, the 40A, so to speak, at the Waldo Durgan parcel in Coolidge Corner. I realize that many people would like to see Coolidge Corner remain the same, like my son, or go back to how it once was, but this is not possible. We have no time machine, and there is no option C. There is not. There are two choices before us tonight: the 40B and the 40A. You have heard many of the reasons why the mixed-use development will be good for our town and its financial perspective, but I want to talk about an entirely different perspective, and that would be the local perspective. And it doesn't get any more local than my family and me. For the last 18 years, we have lived at 20 John Street, Apartment 1, the building and even apartment that will be most affected by development of this parcel either way. We are direct debaters on two sides. Not only will the back of my unit abut the hotel entrance and access, and this is the stunning view that we have today. The wall of my building will also run along the main The wall of my building will also run along the main access road off John Street to the entire development. We live on the first floor, so our apartment will be the most affected by any and all noise, traffic, light, and shadows. As a member both of the committee and as a debuffer on two sides, I strongly support the mixed-use development, and here's why. First, it is a significant aesthetic enhancement over the current site. This is from my kitchen window. I'm not really sure how to do this, but I'm going to try. Ah, there we go. This shot is actually one of my neighbors on Green Street, and this is what they see out of their kitchen window. So this is going down towards the Waldo Alley, and is this the pointer? Yeah. Right there, sorry, right there, and right there, above Sandy's head, are rat boxes. We have had persistent pest problems off and on at the site for years, and we're going to be very happy to get rid of them. The third slide, I'm sorry, that's wrong. Yeah, same thing, other side, equally hideous. This would be the view that we, my neighbor on Green Street, would have. This is the rendering from the architect. This is what he could expect to look at once the misuse development is built, and the creepy Waldo Alley will be replaced by a vibrant streetscape and will be opened up to Beacon Street. And if you look carefully, oops, oh crap, you can see the green line. We actually will get opened up toward Beacon Street, and it will not be this enclosed space anymore. The next slide, if I can get this thing to work, that, oops, oops, I'm sorry, that to the right is the door to my apartment building, and this would be the entrance to the hotel. I'm not doing that, it's doing it by itself. Anyway, as you can see, that this development will be a significant aesthetic improvement over what we look at currently. The second reason I support this is the increased vitality and public benefits that you have heard about. Those of us who live right in this area are largely urban folks, eager for some increased vibrancy in this area. We will, I want to make a series of promises that my association and I will live up to. We will welcome a hotel and the increased vitality. We will welcome the numerous public benefits this development will bring. We will welcome and frequent a café. We will welcome and shop at a new retailer. We will welcome and lounge on new green space in the neighborhood as the developer is committed to transferring underground spots from two municipal lots to build, at their expense, a public pocket park. We will welcome empty nesters with 20-somethings for babysitting. We are gratified that Chestnut Hill Realty has committed to using sustainable building materials and will build lead silver buildings. We will welcome a co-working space that supports a live-work lifestyle. And as a matter of fact, I intend to be the very first applicant for one of those shared working spaces for my husband, who's working from home, is driving me nuts. The third reason I support this, and this is personal, is that this experience has shown me what a thorough and transparent process really is. I would like to point out that the developer, Chestnut Hill Realty, has actually, has been a very good listener, and you can tell I work with children. All of these aforementioned benefits, public benefits, come from an inclusive process, where members of the committee reached out to town meeting members and constituents in the adjacent precincts of 2, 8, 9, and 10, and brought back a wish list to Chestnut Hill Realty last December, and we got significant results. And the results are the public benefits we've spoken of. Chestnut Hill's architect, Cambridge 7, came to every meeting over the last two and a half years and incorporated our requests. In terms of my own association, Coolidge Green, they have strived in this initial phase to match design and streetscape to our buildings. Full disclosure, yes, in a perfect world, we would have preferred a smaller development and a lower building, but let us not allow the perfect to be the enemy of the good, and that is not the hand we were dealt. The choice before the committee and before all of you is the mixed-use or the 40B development. And as you have heard, the revenue from the 40A is considerably greater than the 40B. Over time, it amounts to what the debt exclusion override was for the devotion now Coolidge Corner School. Given how the recent ballot question on overrides for our school system pitted neighborhood against neighborhood, causing so much ill will, it seems more urgent than ever to find other substantial revenue sources to fund our school capacity needs and other needs in our town. Here with this mixed-use development, we have one such source that we can and we should all get behind. Unlike the 40B, which would not provide any public benefits to the neighborhood and would be $1.65 million less revenue for our town services, it would also feel oppressive to our association. This 40A development will bring aesthetic appeal to our debutters, new vitality to our neighborhood, and tremendous and needed revenue to our town. Please join me in voting favorable action on Articles 13, 14, and 15 to allow the zoning change to build this mixed-use development. Thank you.
Now, ladies and gentlemen, we've been at this for an hour and 15 minutes. I'd like to open the floor to questions, and Ms. Leichner, would you come to a microphone, please? Mr. Levy?
My name is Mark Levy. I'm a town meeting member from Precinct 7. Is this mic working?
Yep.
No. Okay, Kelly, come over. My name is Mark Levy, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 7. I've heard a lot of high optimism and cheerleading going on, but there are still some, I think, important questions that have not been addressed, and I'd like to ask some questions about them. First is the issue of pedestrian safety and walkability in the area. Anytime you have undowntown garages, you've got cars coming from underground and crossing the sidewalk to get onto the streets. Unless these are very carefully planned, you could have a great deal of danger from people being clipped by a speeding driver out of the garage, and unless there's a good sightline for both the driver and the pedestrian, you're going to have a lot of accidents. And simply the presence of a driveway like that really deters the walkability of the neighborhood. And if we're going to, I love this term, activate the sidewalks, which reminds me of Dr. Frankenstein, kind of the thunderstorm. I think we're going to have a lot more pedestrian traffic, potentially, than we would have otherwise. And to keep this, I'd like to know what has been done in the terms of design to make this a safe and inviting area for pedestrians. My other question is, what happens if, and some future point, the building goes condo and becomes owner-occupied in large part? That is going to shift the tax burden away from the 40B, from the residential building, to other residents of the town, because you'll be getting a large exemption, as a home sit exemption. Has anyone looked into what the scale of that would be? And finally, marketing a development to empty nesters is wonderful, but the fact of the matter is, under state and federal law, it's illegal to exclude anybody from a building because they have children. And if you have two- and three-bedroom, or even one-bedroom apartments, some people are going to want, with children, are going to want to apply there, and they cannot be excluded because they have children. Has someone done a calculation on what impact that will have on the school environment? Thank you very much.
So, Mr. Waschinsky, who is best qualified to respond? If anyone has the answers, Ms. Bruton does.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Cara Bruton. I'm the Economic Development Director for the town. I'm just going to take that first question about pedestrian impacts. This was a concern that was brought up by committee members. In addition to doing a typical kind of traffic study, even in this initial pass, we did ask the traffic consultant to do a pedestrian level-of-service study, just as a first pass. The result of that is, part of the mitigation package, doing a conceptual plan to widen the sidewalk on Harvard Street. For anybody that's walked by the Booksmith today, that sidewalk is not wide enough. I think we can all agree on that. So there's conversation about making that wider. More significantly, I just want to make sure everybody understands that the entrance to and from the garage is in the middle of the site. It does not go out to a public way. I understand the concern when there's a garage entrance right on a busy road. It is internal to the site. The Waldo Street, as it currently is, if you're walking across Waldo Street, this is something Linda Pelkey brought up tirelessly, and I thank her for that, walking past the Durgan Garage, going towards the drive cleaners, walking across Waldo Street, trucks coming in and out, it's really, really scary as a pedestrian. And one of the things that happens when the Durgan Garage comes down, the widening of Waldo Street means that you have more sight distance, more eye contact with drivers, and that will also make the pedestrian experience safer. But we have not fully designed the site, and I expect there will be other mitigation that will be proposed as the plan moves forward. Neil?
Okay, the question about conversion to condos?
Neil Waschinsky, the developer, this developer doesn't do condos, I'm told, and has stated an intent not to do condos here, but there's no guarantee that that can't happen in the future. So until that happens, and we're, you know, that would be, you know, any developer can develop, can convert it to condos, so that, you know, and that would be the same thing for a 40B. You can have a 40B with condos, right? No? Yes? I'm seeing yeses, I'm seeing no's. Yeah. What was the other question?
The empty nester versus children?
There's no guarantee that there won't be children. The units are being designed for a certain cohort that, but, you know, anybody can rent, and, you know, there'll be certain amenities there that are aimed at certain cohorts, and that's how the marketing would be done.
Thank you, Mr. Bassett.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, John Bassett, Precinct 6. If you look at this question from two points of view, shadow impacts on adjacent properties, and also the number of units that could be added to the subsidized housing inventory, the 40B actually looks better to me in those two ways. With the mixed-use development, as I read it, the residential 13-story building is on the northeast corner of the site, which will have maximum shadow impacts on adjacent properties. If it was 40B, the building could be, although I realize we don't have leverage, but the building could be more in the middle of the site, and it would be, according to the chart, on 1336, a story lower, so the shadow impacts of 40B could be less. On the same chart, it says that the 40B is 60 units. Is that the number of units that would be added to the subsidized housing inventory? Would be 60 under 40B?
299.
So if it was a 40B, it would be all 299 units added to the subsidized housing inventory, which is, would be a significant step towards getting the relief that I think we, most of us agree, we need to get to 10%. So these are important considerations to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leichner.
Judith Leichner, Precinct 16. I don't know, Mr. Moderator, if you want me to read all of the questions I sent. Everybody got...
Why don't you pick out the two most important ones?
Okay, so, but everybody did get the supplement. Allison Seinfeld, you know, sent this out, and it was given out with the supplement. I guess the main questions have to do with some of what Mr. Bassett just asked, which has to do with the SHI, but also concerns, as Ms. Modner talked about, with actual number of affordable units, which have been my concern. And so I don't know if Ms. Seinfeld would like to talk about any of those things. I did send these questions out because I wanted there to be some discussion about this, and as other people have said, I just hope that we're not going to continue to find ourselves here every 12 to 18 months for another upzoning project, and we can do some better planning to make sure that that doesn't happen.
Mr. Blood?
Mr. Blood, thank you. Roger Blood, Housing Advisory Board. Good questions, and I think that, first of all, that town meeting members have received both the questions and a written set of answers that the staff and town members worked to provide some written detail for you. The, in terms of comparing the two alternatives, the 40B and the mixed-use development, the 40B by the numbers, yes, it would produce 299 units on the SHI, because for rental properties that qualify under 40B, the whole, all the units, even the non-affordables, are counted in an artificial way. 60 of the units or 20% would be real affordable units at 50% of the area median income. Now, there's, and on the alternative, the mixed-use, it's, as far as what's counted there, the 11 units that would remain on-site are counted, plain and simple. On the, on the use of the housing trust fund, and the kind of the leverage concept that I'd shared with you, at least briefly, the range of units based on the past experience and the projects I mentioned that have been produced, and prospective, at least one significant one we're aware of, those would be, we would expect, most of those units would be 40B-eligible at, there's no comprehensive permit, but at the point of completion. And depending, the range of units there would be from the mid-40s to the mid-70s. So, and that would be in addition to the 11, the 11 units on-site. So arguably, the two alternatives, there's not a great deal of difference in the total amount of real affordable units that are captured, but there's no denying that 300, roughly 300 units from a 40B, you know, is quite a hit, a positive hit to the SHI. You got a lot of detail in the write-up that you received in terms of all the various pathways and the uncertainties for the town to reach the 10%, and then the key is temporarily or permanently. And I think, I think the key there is that, A, there are many ways that that can happen, and eventually, without being able to be precise, the town will reach the 10%, first based upon temporary statuses of the list of projects that you've seen in the queue, and then eventually a permanent status. One of the reasons it's difficult to predict that with any certainty is not just the varying pathways that these individual 40Bs are taking, and their individual uncertainties, but also the way the basic, the basic sequence of the rules work for counting these units. With a 40B, there's the comprehensive permit, when the town zoning is overridden effectively by the state, and all the units in rental properties, and that's what we're talking about, all the units go on. If after 12 months, the actual building permit, different than the comprehensive 40B permit, hasn't been secured, the, that entire unit count that we've benefited from, and sometimes gotten safe harbor temporary protection from, falls back off. So, for example, we're presently tantalizingly 33 units short of the 10%, 9.87%. That doesn't mean a lot, because Hancock Village Phase 2, with 230 units that we're getting credit for because of their comprehensive permit, is in that number, and it's going to fall back from that 33... number, and it's going to fall back from that 33-unit short by that 230 units. So we'll be back to around 8.8% instead of 9.9% this coming October. And, and then a whole range of questions have to be asked. For example, the main one, when would this putting stone Hancock Village Phase Two come back on the, with the 230 units? Well, we, we believe that will happen about a year later. But again, that's, that's up to Chestnut Hill Realty and, and their, their various plans. Likewise, with a number of other projects, and I, so I won't go on too long, there's all similar questions and answers that lead to a, I believe, a likelihood that we will be above the 10%, not a year from now, or not much more from a year from now, based upon several different projects, 1180 Beacon, 11...
Et cetera.
Yeah. 1180 Boylston, and 1099 Beacon, and several smaller ones. They'll be in varying stages of these temporary progressions to where we'll, we will enjoy being over the 10%, and with some temporary safe harbors. And then we'll have to know how those translate into permanent protection. So, that's, that's pretty much it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Blood. That's a lecture on some pretty arcane stuff. Mr. Schwartz?
Chuck Schwartz, Precinct Nine. I was a member of the Coolidge Corner District Planning Committee years ago. I want to talk about transit. I've heard Chestnut Hill Realty, and I've heard other developers say that they choose this area because it's, it's access to transit, it's access to the T. Several years ago, I was at a hearing of the Transportation Advisory Committee to discuss the bridge bus service at the time. There was a representative from the T who said at that time that they're at capacity that they can't handle anymore. So if we are going to host these kinds of developments, I would ask the town to really pressure the T to improve service, to increase capacity, to improve reliability. And Chris and Tommy, I know you're out there, I hope you can do something about this before we just add to the ridership. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ananian?
Scott Ananian, Precinct Ten. I do have equity concerns with this proposal, but I do plan to vote for the articles. I have a question for the Town Sustainability Coordinator. So there are 289 parking spaces, I believe, if I read my combined reports correctly. The transportation access plan for major impact projects such as this provide that only 2% of those would, would be provided with facilities for EV charging. That would be six of the 289, which seems to me woefully inadequate for a newly constructed building, which presumably will still be standing in 2050. There, we'll hear later tonight, or perhaps Tuesday, that in order to address pressing issues of climate change, we need to electrify everything. I think unbundled parking is good, but I believe that every unit resident should have at minimum the right to install an EV charger at their own expense. It seems irresponsible to build 143 new apartment units whose owners are constrained to use a fossil fuel car or no car at all. Being even most generous in assuming the high bound in our transportation access plan, that 15% or 44 spaces would be at some point converted to convertible, or have the capacity of an EV charger installed in the future, that's still 99 fossil fuel-bound owners. And that's not including all the slots allocated for commercial and other use. So for, my question for the Sustainability Coordinator is, can we do better?
Good question.
Not to put Zoe on the spot, sorry.
Okay.
Scott, do you know I report to Kara?
I don't really mean to put you on the spot.
We can do better, and I'm looking forward to seeing you all on June 5th at the summit, so that we can start doing better.
So let us know who you are, ma'am.
I am Zoe Lynn, and the Town Sustainability Administrator.
Thank you.
Yep.
Ms. Jonas?
Alisa Jonas, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 16. I'm going to vote for this project because it's mixed-use, unlike the 48 that was proposed at Hancock Village, which would have been just as much a fiscal disaster for us as the 40B will be. But I wanted to say one thing about the, the inclusion areas, including the units in the apartment building, and I want to say something about design. One of the reasons why it's good to have units within the building is to mix low-income and high-income families together, and not have a separate building that's high-income and a separate building that's low-income.
Ladies and gentlemen, please.
Anyways, we pushed for that at Hancock Village, and with minimal success, and I, and I'm sad that it's also not happening here, except for those 10 units. The other thing is with design, I just want to plead with this town to work a little harder with developers, to really provide public benefits and aesthetics that improve the quality of our town. I know the Marriott was mentioned, there was a lot said about the public park that the Marriott has provided to the town. I don't know how many people in the public know that the Marriott has a public park for the town, because they park their vans in front of the park, so that everyone thinks it's private. River Road, we were told we couldn't have wide sidewalks, because the developer couldn't afford to do that. Once again, here, complete street says, what sidewalks should, the preferred width for public sidewalks should be 15 feet. It's 12 feet on the commercial area. I just want to urge that we work a little harder to produce really good design for this town.
Thank you. Mr. Spiegel?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I guess this microphone seems to be working. Stanley Spiegel from Precinct Two. We heard earlier that there would be roughly 260 additional bedrooms in the 40B. A couple of nights ago, we were talking very much about school overcrowding. I don't have, it's just a guess as to how many more children might be in those additional 260 some odd bedrooms. But it's important to note that of those 260, 30 of them are three-bedroom units. That is, within the, the 260, we include units that have three bedrooms, which are almost surely going to be marketed to people who have children. We are all talking about school overcrowding. I love children, I love schools. But at this point, I think we have to be cognizant of developments which would either increase or reduce the amount of school overcrowding until we get that problem solved. So I would urge that the mixed-use development is a better bet in many ways, including not exacerbating the school overcrowding problem. Thank you very much.
Okay, I will entertain that motion to terminate debate. Is there a second?
Right there.
Okay, I have the following people signed up to speak, all of whom will speak in favor of this project. Susan Roberts, Frank Carroll, Elton Alperin, Mr. Christ, Ms. Myers, Mr. Lewis, and Mr. Hardy, who are last three non-town meeting members. With that in mind, those in favor of...
Oh, Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Could I request a recorded vote?
You can request one. If there are 35 of your colleagues who would like a recorded vote on the, on the motion for the question, Mr. An...
No, on, on the, sorry. I apologize. I might have jumped again.
On the, all right. We'll, we'll have a recorded vote on the, on the motion under Article 13. But in the meantime, we have a little bit of business, and that is to deal with the motion for the question. Those in favor, please raise your hands. Those opposed, motion carries by a two-thirds vote. So we will have an electronic vote on the motion on page 13-24 over to page 13-32, which you've all heard about exhaustively, and it requires a two-thirds vote. So whenever you're ready. This is main motion, Article 13. 35 town meeting members want a recorded vote? Let's have a recorded vote. I can do this, I can do this on my own motion. Press 1 if you're in favor of the motion under Article 13, 2 if you're opposed, and 3 if you're abstaining. I think the moderator is entitled to call for an electronic vote, even among the other options. Please make sure that your vote is properly recorded. Motion carries by a vote of 205 in favor, four opposed, and 12 abstentions. Don't go away. We have the motion under Article 14 on page 14-96, and, and seek. Those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Article 15, motion on page 15-14 relating to the restrictive covenant. Those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Ladies and gentlemen, we proceed now to Article 16. The motion under Article 16 is on page 16-10, moved by, and it includes the map on page 16-11, moved by Mr. Dempsey, seconded by Mr. Lynn Jones, to establish a parking benefit district in Brookline Village, et cetera, in the words of the article. Mr. Dempsey?
We have quiet, please, in the rear of the auditorium.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Chris Dempsey. I'm a town meeting member from Precinct Six, and I'm the Chair of the Brookline Transportation Board, and I have a confession to make. The Transportation Board sometimes gets things wrong. I know that's a shock to many of you. Our select board is infallible, our moderator is certainly infallible, but the Transportation Board sometimes gets things wrong. And part of, the, part of the reason we get things wrong sometimes is that we struggle to balance the various competing concerns that come before us. Here's an example. We may have a resident request that because parking on their street is really tight, and they have a narrow driveway, that we restrict parking on either side of their driveway, so that they have an easier time to pull in and pull out. One of their neighbors may say, you know, you can't do that, because I need to park there, I park there all the time. But there are a lot of people parking on our street that aren't actually neighbors and residents. Can we restrict that parking to just residents? And then a business may come before us on this very same issue and say, you can't do that, you can't restrict it to residents. Our customers park on that street. We need to make sure that that street is available to people that are not just residents. And maybe that first neighbor comes back who actually wanted the change, and they also oppose residential parking permits on their street, because they have visitors or guests that come visit them. It's pretty typical for us to struggle with decisions like this. Warren, Article 16 is all about getting the Transportation Board and the Select Board more comprehensive community input before we make decisions about parking. This is essentially how it works. We create an advisory board of nine residents and representatives of businesses in this parking district. And ideas and concepts and changes bubble up from those nine members who all, who hold their meetings in public and also take public comment, to the Transportation Board and to the Select Board. Municipalities were given the power to create parking benefit districts in Governor Baker's 2016 municipal modernization legislation. And PBDs are common in other parts of the country, and they're starting to be adopted in Massachusetts, with Arlington, Massachusetts adopting a parking benefit district in Arlington Center as maybe the best example. Here's Arlington. Reminds me a lot of parts of Brookline Village. You've got bus service, you've got parking issues, you've got a mix of different uses. Here's Boulder, Colorado, which has had parking benefit districts for years. Austin, Texas, I love this shot, this reminds me of Coolidge Corner, in fact, with the neon theater sign. Here's Old Town Pasadena, which is probably the most famous parking benefit district in the country. They started theirs in 1993, and in the five years after they created their parking benefit district, they saw property tax revenue in the district triple, and sales tax revenue quadruple. In the words of Jeff Speck, a Brookline resident and a noted urbanist, "The experience has been transformative. A virtuous cycle of improvements, leading to more visitors, leading to more parking revenue, leading to more improvements." Clearly, this is an effort worth copying. Now, I am not going to claim that the institution of a parking benefit district in Brookline Village is going to quadruple property tax revenue, or, or triple, or, or quadruple property tax revenue, or sales tax revenue. But it will provide a boost at a time when we are looking for any sources we can get that are not residential property taxes. And PBDs have actually been recommended to Brookline before. The 2017 override study committee said that the town should study this idea further, and also said that an implementation of a parking benefit district could eventually reduce pressure on the general fund. So what would Article 16 actually do? All it really does is permit the Select Board to create and appoint a parking benefit district advisory board composed of those nine Brookline Village representatives. The public, the, the PBD advisory board would then convene in public meetings, seeking public comment at publicly noticed hearings, and they would study parking issues. They would ask questions about what's the parking utilization, where are there parking meters and where are there not? How are the parking permits in Brookline Village working? How is parking working for the various stakeholders that want it to work well in Brookline Village? And then also, where does Brookline Village need a little help? Where are there places it could be cleaned up a little bit? Where we could add some lighting? Where we could add some public art? How can we make Brookline Village a more attractive place? And then after that deliberation and that discussion, then they can make a recommendation to the Select Board and also to the Transportation Board about policy changes. Here's a map of the parking benefit district. The red triangles are where there are parking meters. The blue is the, the zone of the district. And here's the current flow of funds. Today, all of our parking meter revenue goes into the general fund. On, in most parking meters in Brookline Village, we charge $1.25 per hour. So that's five quarters going into the general fund. If the Parking Benefit District Advisory Board, and this is a big if, if they decide that they want to raise parking meter rates at some meters, they may not do that, but if they do, and for example, they decide that they want to raise it by one quarter per hour, which would still be lower than many peer communities like Boston and Cambridge, then those five quarters still flow to the general fund, and the one additional new incremental quarter flows to the Parking Benefit District. So you still have in Brookline Village roughly $1 million a year flowing to the general fund, and about $200,000 a year flowing to the Parking Benefit District with that one quarter change. And here are some of the things that a Parking Benefit District could fund. Legislature actually gave towns pretty broad authority here to decide on how they want to spend these funds. It could be trees and plantings, it could be flowers, it could be enhanced winter lighting, could be parklets, anything that you can think of that's a public realm improvement can, is, is essentially available to the Parking Benefit District. You could also do something just to focus on better managing parking supply. So you could create a Parking Benefit District Guide. So you could create a parking benefit district guide that could sit on the shelves and counters of small businesses, and when their customers express frustration with finding parking, the merchant or business owner can hand them that pamphlet and say, "Here's where parking is available, here are the rules, here's how it can work out better for you next time because I want to make sure that you come back." So one of the big questions here is why give the Select Board approval of the parking benefit district funds and not Town Meeting? And this is really a bit of a Goldilocks approach. The legislature actually gave very wide authority here on who can decide to spend those funds. They would let, according to the legislation, they would let a nonprofit entity without any control of town government have control over those funds. And I will tell you that in our early conversations with merchants over the course of last year, many of them understandably expressed a preference for that nonprofit model. My reaction was the same one you're probably having. Town Meeting would never go for that. And we knew that Town Meeting would probably be more likely to pass this if we gave Town Meeting control. But the merchants and businesses did not like that idea. They felt like they needed more of a sort of one-stop shop, one place to go for both the revenue side, which the Select Board controls, and the cost side. So the Select Board model is sort of the not-too-hot, not-too-cold, just-right here. It also, again, has the benefit of being one place to approve both how much revenue the PBD has and also what they're spending their resources on. Another question is about other commercial districts in town. And some have called this a pilot. I don't use that word, but I do think this is an opportunity to learn about parking benefit districts, see how they work in action, and understand whether they would be a good fit for other parts of town. Adopting one in Brookline Village does not in any way preclude us from adopting them in other geographies, other areas in the town in the future. And to be very clear, Town Meeting would have full control over whether there was any expansion or addition of a parking benefit district. So quickly, some key governance points here. The parking benefit district advisory board is just that, it is purely advisory. It does not have any formal control over meter rates, meter locations, or expenditures. The Select Board retains the control over meter rates. The Transportation Board retains control over the locations and the regulation of parking. Any rate increases that are approved or recommended by the advisory board are above the townwide standard rate, and the Select Board retains full control to increase that rate at any time. At any point, the Select Board can say, "We need more general town revenue and we are increasing the rates." So it does not tie their hands in any way. And again, the Select Board would approve the parking benefit district budget. The motion you have before you is a compromise and consensus motion. It's been wisely shaped by the Town Meeting process, and in particular, I want to thank Steve Keynes, who's the Chair of the AC's Planning and Regulation Subcommittee, for his deep engagement with me as we developed the motion that's before you. I'm grateful for his help and his wisdom on that. And an example of that shaping is that the original motion included the Town Hall parking lot in it. And Steve wisely recommended to me, "Let's keep that separate, keep that fully outside of the parking benefit district and just deal with other meters," as an attempt to make clear that we believe that those spots are really about town business and not about the broader commercial districts. There's been a lot of questions about who's around the table for this decision, and I think it very much matters who is around the table. Today, we don't have enough voices around the table on parking. We don't have enough diversity in the choice, in the decision-makers and the decisions that we make. We don't have enough people who are engaged in that question. This is all about bringing around merchants, residents of all types, around that table for that discussion so that we can manage our parking and manage our commercial district better than we do today. And I think this is a very important point, that the parking benefit district revenues can be used to improve equity. And those ideas will bubble up from the members of this advisory board. You've got some examples here. You could use this revenue to reserve or discount on-street parking, or even strike a deal with the Children's Hospital parking lot to reserve parking spaces for home health aides servicing residents in the area. That is a totally legal and justifiable use of these funds. You could use this revenue to provide better transportation options for the village's workforce who struggle to maybe pay for parking, long-term parking in the village. You could use this revenue for enhanced lighting. So if there are places in Brookline Village where people don't feel safe walking, and we want to make that experience safer, we can use this revenue for that. And if we want to improve pedestrian amenities, or ADA-accessible ramps, or even just provide some more benches in Brookline Village, that's a totally acceptable use under this PBD. I would argue that all of these will improve the equity of Brookline Village, make it a more fair place, more open place, a more welcoming place. And again, those ideas will bubble up from the members of this committee. We're really proud of the support that we have from many in the business community. The business community does not speak with a united voice, but you do see many recognizable small businesses here. I talked this morning to Siobhan Carew, who has lived in the village for years and owns Pomodoro and Matt Murphy's. She said she would be here tonight to advocate, but she works seven nights a week. Seven nights a week she works. I think a lot of businesses have that experience. They feel because they are living day by day for their business, they haven't had as much time. They don't have the ability to show up at a CIP meeting of the AC Subcommittee and plead their case for more planters in Brookline Village. This gives them a place where they can go and they know that they're going to be heard. So I hope that you will join the unanimous Select Board, the Advisory Committee, the unanimous Transportation Board, Brookline PACS, the Town Meeting Green Caucus, Climate Action Brookline, and me in voting yes on warrant Article 16. Thank you very much.
All right, Ms. Hardabek. Mr. Friedman, would you come forward? And if you don't mind, I'm going to have Ms. Hardabek go first, just to save a little time here.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Kelly Hardabek, Town Meeting Member from Precinct 7, speaking for the Advisory Committee tonight. The Advisory Committee recommends favorable action on warrant Article 16 and is supportive of its very worthy goal of enhancing the Brookline Village business district. However, during our discussions, some AC members raised concerns of varying levels that are not addressed in the Advisory Committee's motion. However, it did not impact our support for this article. And the following remarks highlight the issues raised for the purposes of tonight's discussion. First, the scope of the parking district. During the AC's review, there were questions about the perceived boundaries of Brookline Village for the purposes of creating the district. And it was pointed out that metered parking spaces on the northern end of Brookline Ave that were included originally within the district are used almost exclusively by contractors and persons accessing the medical area. In response, the petition amended the map to remove these spaces from the proposed district, those specifically that are located on the northern end of Brookline Ave, but only those spaces north of Aston Wall. Furthermore, as the petitioner mentioned, there was a general consensus that metered spaces in the Town Hall parking lot should be excluded because they were used principally for townwide businesses and not for parking to shop within Brookline Village. There were also questions about including metered spaces located in front of the library and on Cypress Street, as well as spaces associated with the Public Health Building. In response, the petitioner agreed to exclude the Town Hall parking lot, as mentioned, but not those in front of the library or Cypress Street or elsewhere. Two, there were some budgetary and planning concerns raised. Article 16 takes the approval process for the expenditure of funds from the district's dedicated account out of our normal budgetary process, which involves the Advisory Committee and Town Meeting, and puts it solely in the hands of the Select Board. Again, some Advisory Committee members raised concern about the coordination of these expenditures with the town's normal budgetary process, which involves a townwide assessment of neighborhood needs. Three, cost of administration of the program. Advisory also debated the cost to the town to administer the district, as well as other parking benefit districts that may subsequently be formed, should this one be successful. The administration of the PBD would be principally through the Transportation Department, and it was concluded that it was unlikely these costs would be excessive, provided there was only one parking benefit district. The petitioner agreed that if these costs escalate significantly, it would be necessary to require parking benefit districts to provide funding for the town administrative costs. And four, support of local businesses. The Advisory Committee had some concerns about the level of support for the district from local businesses. In fact, the Planning and Regulation Subcommittee, which initially vetted this article, asked to see evidence of significant support. And the petitioner did present us with a letter of support from seven businesses, as well as survey results from about 20 more that expressed interest in the district. That support cleared the bar set by the Subcommittee, but not by as much as we'd hoped. But despite remaining concerns from some Advisory Committee members, a majority of the Advisory Committee believed that petitioner had made a persuasive case for adoption of Article 16 as provided in the Advisory Committee's motion. And so by a vote of 13 to 10 to zero, the Advisory Committee recommends favorable action on the Advisory Committee's motion for Article 16 appearing on pages 16-10 and 16-11 of the combined reports.
Thank you, Mr. Friedman.
Harry Friedman, Precinct 12. Ms. Hardabek spoke for 13 members of the Advisory Committee. I speak for the 10 who voted against this. There are four reasons that I believe Town Meeting should reject this article. Reason number one, which I call process and procedure. The warrant article does an end run around Town Meeting's power of the purse. Currently, projects in the capital improvement program get vetted by the Advisory Committee's capital Subcommittee, then by the full Advisory Committee, and finally by Town Meeting itself. The projects go through this process for two reasons. One, to work out any kinks in the proposals. And two, to be sure that this is something on which Town Meeting wishes to spend money. Non-capital items go through a similar vetting process when a department's budget is reviewed by an Advisory Subcommittee, then by the full Advisory Committee, and then by Town Meeting itself. Town Meeting's major function is to control spending in the town. The structure of the parking improvement district takes this power out of the hands of Town Meeting and assigns it to the Select Board, that is, to the executive. This might be less objectionable if we were talking a minuscule amount of money. However, we could be talking large dollars, especially if funds build up in the parking district over several years. We could end up with a situation where Town Meeting vets and debates spending $50,000 on an improvement at Coolidge Corner, but the selectmen on their own spend $100,000 in the village. This is not the proper way to run a budget. Reason number two, buy-in. When the proponents first came to the Advisory Committee, they came with a list of nine local businesses that supported this, two of which weren't actually in the district. When Brookline residents want to set up a local historic district or a neighborhood conservation district, they're usually asked to show the support of 80% to 90% of the residents in the proposed district. Now, the parking improvement district is a different kind of animal. But before we approve it, it ought to have the support of a significant number of businesses and residents in the area. There are approximately 123 first-floor businesses in the proposed district. The warrant article has the active support of approximately 10. That's simply not a large enough degree of interest. To hear the proponents speak, everyone favors this. In truth, support is lacking. Most businesses have either not indicated interest or support, or simply not responded to the flyers that were left with them. In addition, when things such as local historic districts are formed, it is the residents who are asked by the town to initiate the district and to gather support. This parking district appears to have been organized from the top down, as opposed to the bottom up. I know that business owners are busy, and perhaps they're not well-organized in the village. And maybe there is no strong merchants' association as there is in Coolidge Corner. Nevertheless, that is insufficient excuse to willy-nilly approve a parking district where buy-in is lacking. Reason number three, it's premature. The children's complex at the B2 parcel isn't yet finished. It will bring new customers to the district once it's open for business. The parking district may prove to be unnecessary to generate new business in the village. Reason number four, it's totally unnecessary. If you don't buy my process and procedure, buy-in, and premature arguments, then I end with this one. The district is unnecessary because almost everything it seeks to do can be done today under current law without setting up a rigid parking benefit district with the rules and regulations that go along with it. Do you think that parking fees should be raised in the village, either as a way of raising funds or as a way of encouraging more parking turnover? The parking district gives the Select Board the power to do this. But the Select Board already has the power to do it. They can do it tomorrow. Do you think there should be a committee of residents and merchants to come up with suggestions for improvements to the public realm, either in the village or elsewhere in town? The parking district article gives the Select Board the power to convene this committee. But they can already do it. They can form an ad hoc committee tomorrow of local businessmen whose job is to give ideas on how the local business area can be improved. The Transportation Board can do it tomorrow. They have a bicycle advisory committee, they have a pedestrian advisory committee, they can set up a parking advisory committee. They don't need this law. The Economic Development Office can do it. It can be done by all of them immediately. This provides both greater input and participation by residents, but we can do it now. So what does the article propose that the Select Board does not currently have the power already to do? Just one thing. The ability to spend the money without going to Town Meeting. And I say that's a good thing. Town Meeting should have to approve spending requests. That's our job, and that's what the budget process is for. The money raised through the parking district is the excess of the village parking fee over the regular parking fee, as Chris explained. However, it is still money coming from the public, and it is still part of the town's general revenue. If the parking district builds up a surplus, and there's an urgent need to spend the money in another commercial district or for some other need, such as a park, or a school, or to clear snow from our streets, why should these funds be held sacrosanct? They were raised in the village, but they were not raised by the village or by the merchants through any kind of self-assessment, such as what happens when in Boston they do a business improvement district, where the merchants get together and approve this district and self-assess themselves to raise money. These funds are coming from the general public, most of whom will not live in the village, but simply are using the area in which to park to go to the businesses. These are public revenues and need to be treated as such, available for general public needs and per the usual budgeting process. Please vote no action.
Ms. Hamilton and Ms. Goldsmith, would you come forward, please?
Heather Hamilton for unanimous Select Board. The Select Board understands the parking benefits districts are an innovative way to provide targeted improvements to commercial districts. These districts have been successful in other parts of the country and was recently implemented in the town of Arlington. However, the Board did have some concerns with the original resolution and questioned who would ultimately have control over any additional funds that were raised and how this would address parking issues within the area. It was also noted that they... It was also noted that there would be competing interests and need for these funds. Furthermore, there were concerns about the proposed area map. In particular, the Town Hall parking lot was originally included in the proposed area. The Board felt that individuals coming to Town Hall to do business should not be subjected to increased meter rates. The Board was supportive of this measure after language was adopted by the advisory committee that addressed many of the concerns that the Board had voiced. Overall, the Board sees the potential benefit of implementing a parking benefit district in order to allow more voices of residents and merchants in Brookline Village to work collaboratively to recommend policies that would most benefit the community. We urge favorable action. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Goldsmith. And Susan Healy, would you come forward, please, and sit in the front row? There you are.
Hi, Jennifer Goldsmith, Precinct Eleven. Hi, everyone. Can you hear me okay? Hi, Ms. Jonas. Okay, I'll try a little harder. Okay, so, when I read this warrant article, I had this sort of David and Goliath feeling for a couple of reasons. I think Mr. Dempsey is one of the best speakers and most persuasive speakers in front of Town Meeting, maybe second only to Tommy Vitolo, who has a little more humor, but, you know, you're doing well. But besides that, you know, when it's someone who you usually agree with, it's hard to sort of say, wait, I don't think I agree with this, but I just want to talk about the reasons that I'm uncomfortable with this particular warrant, and they mirror some of what Mr. Friedman said. So, let's see, I'm reading this on my phone, and I should say also, Mr. Dempsey leads the Transportation Commission, which has a state mandate, so that really makes it in some ways more, has sort of more heft than some of the other commissions in town, and I really respect the work they do, and that he acknowledges that they don't always get it right. I don't think any of us always gets it right. But anyway, I want to speak against the odds. My questions are, how does this not make each neighborhood, each commercial district within town, a feedom sort of pitted against other districts, pooling together a puddle of parking money, not necessarily with any master vision across town? So I appreciate the frustration of Brookline Village, but I wonder if it isn't better planning for town-wide business development and entrepreneurship, rather than having this so tied to money? Like, to echo what Mr. Friedman said, there can be effective groups of business leaders who have ideas, but they don't have to necessarily be tied to the money process that this is so clearly anchored to. And I feel uncomfortable that if each pocket of town were to collect their own money to the exclusion of others, the kinds of issues Mr. Friedman raised could easily come about, having one pool of money sitting here that can't help a need over there. And I feel like it might be more creative and effective to have business voices just sort of work together, but not tie it to dollars. I raised this question to another prolific Town Meeting speaker, who I typically agree with, and he said, and this was improbable for this person, it takes money for people to participate. And I, you know, that is sort of a cynical view. I think that there are other, in Boston, there are ways that the Main Streets projects have worked with the partnership of the city to make really vibrant business districts. I'm not sure why this has to be so tied to money. And I would say parenthetically, and not necessarily relevant to this warrant article, if participation costs money, let's provide babysitting vouchers to make Town Meeting more accessible to broad participation. Just saying. Like, if it takes money to participate, let's make participation where it matters. And I wanted to draw a parallel. A few years ago, one of the elementary schools in town wanted to do a capital project with PTO funds, and they sort of said, we have the money, the process is so onerous, let us just build our auditorium. And it was felt that creating eight pockets of competing school wealth wasn't strategic or equitable, and that idea fell away, and similarly, that response was sort of to perceived inaction or lack of central planning by the schools, and they felt they could solve it alone with their money. And I really see a parallel here. There was a reason that didn't work. I think that pitting doesn't make sense. There are other business districts that might not be able to raise as much money or not have the appeal, and that sort of pitting just doesn't make sense to me. I see this, let's see, I don't see this as rationale in the big picture. I think it's maybe, sort of, a kind of a plea for better strategic town planning than for better meter fees. And I don't think that even good warrant articles, which, you know, may be good, I think that's the tail wagging the dog. It could be a really good tail, but we want a better dog. So I think we could do better. And I know that there's a blurry analogy to the enterprise budgets, and I appreciate that this is not an enterprise budget, but we definitely had the, to me, that's a dissuader, and I've talked about this before. Enterprise budgets sort of work well for utilities, but we've seen it with a golf course, where they raise money, they spend money, and they can't contribute to the town. And I find it really frustrating when they talk about their facility and their programs. Those are town facilities and programs that we operate in isolation, and so I have that predisposition to fear that kind of, that's college, and being lucky enough to have opportunities beyond that. You can say that people who work as home health aides, really, another quarter matters. Every, you know, it is a very hard life. Not being able to afford to park or to be able to park near really has a detrimental effect, and so anything that has that sort of parking implication for people who are working as home health aides or working as visiting nurses, as I got an email from another Town Meeting member who's worked as a visiting nurse and has had trouble parking in that area, said that's not an irrelevant concern. So, well, I may not compel you to change this, I hope you'll consider the difference between wanting to be supportive of the business owners and wanting to support vibrant business activity and tying that to money in a way that could be to the exclusion of other districts, or really just doesn't necessarily say to our own planning processes, we can do better. And when Mr. Dempsey and I spoke, which he very kindly talked to me about some of my concerns and shifted me a little bit, he said, you know, I talked to one of the business owners, and she, she said, what time should I be at Town Meeting? And she said, what's Town Meeting? And, you know, and so the idea that we have business owners who may not be familiar with the governance of the town and how they can be a part of it is really on us as Town Meeting members to reach out to them, not only when something comes up, but in general. And so I feel conscious that if this is a way to engage business owners, that's great, but it doesn't have to be tied to added quarters in the meters. And I just have to put in a plug, Susan's going to speak next. If you need to have your hair cut or colored, go to HC Studio. I go to Supercuts, my time is short, I can't afford it, but it's the best hair color you could get. So, I see, you know, there are some people here who could, thank you. Bernard especially.
So we'll hear from Ms. Healy. Come up to the microphone.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and thank you, Town Hall Meeting members. I do know what Town Meeting is, I just didn't know where it was, so, I just wanted to make that correction. And I am also not a resident of Brookline, so I thank you for letting me speak this evening, but I am a businesswoman for nineteen years in Brookline.
So, let's have your name and the name of your business, Ms. Healy.
My, I'm sorry, my name is Susan Healy, and I own HC Studio on Thirty Station Street. So, and I think I spend more time here in Brookline than I do at home in Rosendale. I have been here for nineteen years. I love Brookline. I've seen it go through a lot of changes over the nineteen years, and when I first moved in, there was nothing, and I was kind of scared to walk around Station Street at night. And it has a vibrancy to it. And I think that you would all agree that, you know, Brookline Village is residents living amongst business owners, and we work together, and you can get out in the morning and go get a cup of coffee, and I would love to see that continue. And I had some things planned to talk about, but I'm going to kind of change my course and just talk to you about a business owner, and the parking, and the negativity of the word parking in Brookline is unbelievable over the past three years. I had ninety-four clients in the salon today, and I went through before I came here today, and we have a section where you can write notes, and there were sixty-four people who were late and wrote a note because they couldn't find parking. And that's a lot. We had two clients last week that canceled their appointment on the spot because they couldn't find parking, frustrated. So, was I, am I frustrated about parking? Yes, but I don't wallow in that. I think the reason why I've been a successful person and businesswoman for nineteen years is because I'm proactive, and I have created a lift promotion. Take a lift on us, you know, come visit us. You get loyalty points if you walk, if you take the train, you know, trying to work with it. We most recently have started an initiative with, you know, businesses on the T, you know? You can't create parking when there isn't space. So, I kind of thought, parking benefits district, well, how is that giving my clients more parking? Or the people who work for me, where are they going to park? But I'm sat, and I'm going to say, I'm going to listen to this, and for the first time in three years, I am excited to say the word parking. And I am because this is not going to solve the problems, but it's going to start to open the door for the future of Brookline Village. I am on Station Street, and I'm seeing empty spaces and wondering what's going to go in there, and is the village going to become disconnected? And it's an amazing place, I love it. So, for me, voting yes, this is a start. We can build community, we can, you know, have any of you, I'm sure, if you sit and think for a moment, have you been to Old Pasadena? Have you been to Austin, Texas? Have you been to Boulder, Colorado? I've been to all three of them, and most recently, last year, I went to an event in Old Pasadena, and I said to my colleague, this place is amazing. Like, I didn't know why it was amazing, it was unbelievable, it was beautiful. The energy in that area, I can't even tell you, and for those of you who have been there, I think you'll share my feeling on that. So, when Chris probably went to a meeting, I'm like, I'm going to go check out this meeting about parking. And I listened, and I thought, wow, that makes sense. So, I ask you to vote yes on this tonight because we're not creating something from scratch, we're adopting something that is super-successful in other areas, and I think it's the beginning to saving this protected, awesome area that doesn't become disconnected. And people just say, ah, I'm not going to Brookline Village. What's the benefit? You know, I think that I heard some speakers talk earlier on a different article, we need vibrancy, we need change, we need people to want to come there. You know, it's the difference of, you know, going to, you know, a fast-food restaurant or sitting down having a beautiful dinner. I mean, how does that make you feel when you're, you know, out and you're having a beautiful dinner, and there's a white linen tablecloth? You feel amazing. And maybe the food's the same, they probably get the food from the same place, but it's presentation, and I think that, I don't know how politics works and all of that that was talked about earlier.
Lucky you.
And so I'm just here simply to share, I didn't read one thing that I had written because I just wanted to share with you how I feel, and I just urge you to vote yes, and we can start the conversation and start to put together an advisory board that I would be proud to apply for. I don't even know how that process works, but I would be honored to be part of it. So, it's been a long night, I thank you all, and please vote yes.
Mike Sandman, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Three, and Advisory Committee Member, although I'm very definitely asking a question for myself here. Mr. Dempsey, I'm, as you know, your predecessor's predecessor's Chair of the Transportation...
Okay, all three of you better come to the mic and the next mic over. We're having trouble with that one. Ms. Brown and Mr. Davis.
Mike Sandman, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Three. Mr. Dempsey knows that I'm his predecessor's predecessor's Chair of the Transportation Board, and makes me your administrative grandfather. And during my tenure, we could have been wrong, but we never were. I would, I will support this article, but I do want to point out that study after study shows that increasing meter fees results in more turnover, more space availability, and less cruising for open space, and it's one of the factors certainly that has improved the situation in Austin and Boulder and in Old Pasadena. You mentioned that we need revenue. Raising the townwide rate for meters by twenty-five cents yields seven hundred thousand dollars in revenue. Rather than focus on one district, I ask you to go from there and recommend that the Select Board raise meter rates across the whole town. Sorry, folks. Perhaps with a designated percentage for streetscape or other improvements and enhancements that you mentioned, but I think it's a mistake to stop here. Rather, we should be looking at townwide, at the meter rates that we have and the parking policies that we have, with an eye towards both increasing revenue and improving the parking situation in the way that Ms. Healy has talked about everywhere.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Daniel Ruben Fishman, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Four. Mr. Moderator, there's been discussion about the town of Arlington, and I recognize that the town administrator may not want to call Austin and Pasadena collect, but I was wondering if the town administrator has called any of the leaders of Arlington, or maybe the Transportation Department has called Arlington to see how it's actually working in Arlington.
Mr. Kleckner.
Good evening, Mel Kleckner, Town Administrator. Well, as it turns out, I run into the town manager in Arlington quite a bit, we're colleagues, attend a lot of the same meetings, and so I knew, I had heard that they were adopted this, I think probably the only community so far in Massachusetts that's adopted it, and I did ask how they felt it was working, and what I heard mostly was a feeling that the district did create a mechanism to bring the merchants and the town government together, created a little bit more dialogue, a little bit more creativity, and they seemed to think it was a good model.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Hi, my name is Deborah Brown, and I am a Town Meeting Member from Precinct One. Mr. Dempsey and I had a brief conversation. My concern is about the impact that this district will have on people that don't have a lot of money. The area is currently undergoing a significant gentrification process, in particular in the village, and my concern is that if there's not a great deal of thoughtful attention to what these hikes potentially mean, and to what these improvements mean to the people that don't have anywhere else to go, that we're putting them in an untenable position. I actually lived in Austin, Texas, and I love it, but I can tell you that every time I go back, there are fewer and fewer old-timers. They're, you know, they're getting further and further outside of Austin. So I think that there are real dynamics there that I haven't really heard discussed that, you know, this may be the second or third thing that we're voting on, and I don't think we're adequately factoring in what it means to poor people in this town, and this is another case. So, before we, you know, give this a resounding yes, I think we have to be very careful and say, you know, what are the benefits to help those that have little? And are we infacting this up so that the people that have little have less, including nowhere to live? So, thank you.
Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jonathan Davis, Precinct Ten, Town Meeting Member. One of the things that I noticed when I looked at the map is that it sure seems like it's not just stores that are here, but there are also apartment buildings and residences here. And then I took a look at the wording of the article, both the original article and then the article that's proposed by the Advisory Committee, and it's interesting to me, it talks about how there has to be, the Advisory Board is going to consist of nine people, five of whom must either own or manage businesses in the... nine people, five of whom must either own or manage businesses in the district. But there is absolutely no requirement that any actual residents, people who just live there, must be part of, must be appointed. In fact, there's nothing that requires that anybody who lives in Brookline has to be appointed. And I think that that's a real shortfall here of this article. There's, it's interesting that somebody who owns or manages a business located in the district is eligible to be, in fact, probably may be appointed because there's a requirement of appointing five such people. But there's no requirement of appointing actual residents. And I think this is a real equity issue. And to me, the article is, I think it's not quite ready for prime time. And I think this is the thing that really sort of persuades me about it, that there is no requirement of appointing residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cunningham.
Is this Mike? Yeah. I want to thank Wendy...
Name, please.
Lisa Cunningham, Precinct Fifteen. Can you hear me? Okay, sorry. First of all, I'd like to thank Wendy McMillan, who's a new Town Meeting Member, who I've not met, for her observations about the punitive nature of this article to low-income residents. I'm trying to, I'm going to try not to repeat any points that other people have made already, but I will say...
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. But I will say that I calculated nine supporters out of 120 ground-level business owners. That's 7.5% business support. Anecdotally, the friends and family that I know who live in Brookline Village, which was where I used to live as well, said that they had never heard of this warrant article. I'm also very concerned because Brookline... Hello? Brookline Village serves as the heart of our public services that are essential services for all the residents of Brookline, many of whom, like me, have no choice but to drive a car to get here. That includes Town Hall, the courthouse, the police station, the Public Health Building, the main library branch, the fire department, and the health department. Since most of us can't reach Brookline Village by public transit, but need to access these public buildings for important...
Your mic's cutting out. Can we do anything about it?
Use the center one, please.
Hello? Okay. But have to go to Brookline Village for important services and meetings to vote, pay taxes, and obtain permits. It seems punitive to establish a special district, making it even more difficult and expensive for the general public to access our public buildings. Brookline Village belongs to all of Brookline and not just local businesses and residents. I'm compelled to add, having heard some of the testimony already, that I rarely can find a space in the Town Hall lot. I don't know about anybody here, but I have to go to Town Hall quite a bit. And I rarely find a space in that Town Hall parking lot. It's woefully inadequate to handle the public services in Brookline. I also have a hard time understanding how higher parking turnover relates to improving anything for local businesses, or how this is even a green, a quote-unquote "green" idea. I don't think it's, I don't see how raising the price of a parking meter has an influence on how long it takes you to do your errands, eat your lunch or dinner, or how long you have to spend at a meeting or a birthday party. Related to Wendy's point, I also worry about raising meter rates and the effect that they may have on people who might underfeed their meters, or who do not have access to a credit card, and will instead incur a much more expensive parking ticket. I've also looked at all the amenities that were quoted on the website that was provided. And I don't see how a lot of those amenities apply to the Brookline Village area. So, first of all, from an environmental perspective, I'm strongly opposed to more nighttime lighting. I also don't see how the narrow and crowded sidewalks in Brookline Village can accommodate the illustrated parklets, which will not be usable for at least half the year anyway, because we don't have the climate of Pasadena. The same thing goes for flower planters. And I don't know where there's any space for a pocket park. And in terms of banners and wayfinding, I don't know of anybody who ever gets lost in Brookline Village. And to me, it just smacks of the mollification that we see almost everywhere. And I've also looked at the case studies. And the case studies that were cited, particularly Pasadena, has nothing, if you read the case study, it has actually no relationship at all to the conditions in Brookline and in Brookline Village in particular. So, in terms of the, we often do not get things right. So, that's why this is a great idea mantra. It seems that it would be a far easier solution to work a bit harder at getting things right, rather than setting up inequitable solutions which have no greater likelihood of accomplishing that goal.
Okay. Is there a second? All right. You see who's at the microphones? The microphone. And I have the following people who signed up to speak. Mr. O'Neill, Ms. Mockmuller, Mr. David Gladstone, not Town Meeting Member, Mr. Carroll, Ms. Trecker, Ms. Nobrega, Mr. Englander, and Mr. Rialt. But all speaking in favor. I have no one else other than Ms. Cunningham, who's signed up to speak against. She certainly had her moment in the sun. So, on the motion for the question, those in favor, please raise your hands. The question's been called. The motion was seconded. We are now taking a vote on whether to terminate debate. If you wish to terminate debate, please raise your hands. Those opposed to terminating the debate, motion carries by a two-thirds vote. On the...
Challenge of vote.
You what? Okay, Mr. Davis. We'll have an electronic vote for the purpose of verifying the, my announcement that it was a two-thirds vote. This is on the motion for the question. This is not a recorded vote. This is merely to verify the vote count. So... Press one if you wish to terminate debate. Press two if you wish to continue. Slug on. Press three if you abstain. This requires a two-thirds vote.
I'm a no, by the way. I don't have my electronic device with me.
You can't hold a good town meeting down. The motion fails by a vote of 134 in favor and 71 opposed, which is not a two-thirds vote. Ms. Granoff, can we have quiet, please?
Okay. Susan Granoff, Precinct Seven. I have a concern about the inadvertent creation of have-and-have-not businesses in the Brookline Village area because of this warrant article. There are going to be some businesses which have fairly high-end clientele, or there are unique businesses where they will see no drop-off should parking rates be higher in this one district as compared to parking in the rest of Brookline. But there are many other businesses in that area, smaller businesses, businesses that may have other variations found elsewhere in Brookline, or which simply don't have customers who can afford spending the extra amount for parking, or may think that, well, if parking is higher in Brookline Village, we'll simply shop elsewhere. And so that over time, this may inadvertently create problems for some of the businesses in the area and not for others. And I'm wondering that because there are over 120 businesses, and we've only heard really from such a small percentage, that perhaps it's premature to be creating this without getting the full amount of feedback from all of these businesses, all of which will be impacted by the increase in parking fees that are likely to result.
Thank you. Ms. Cohen.
Yes, hi. My name is Susan Cohen. I'm a Town Meeting Member in Precinct Seven. Close to the mic. Okay, thank you. I was really perplexed about how to vote on this warrant article. So, I decided to call four businesses on Brookline Village. So, I called The Watch Shop, The Children's Bookstore, Cuddy's, and The Village Pizza House. So, The Watch Store, he knew nothing about this warrant article. He had no idea what I was talking about. The Children's Bookstore, the woman, Terry, is her name, she told me that someone came by a couple months ago, gave her something, but she never heard from anybody again. So, she had no idea what was going on. I spoke to Cuddy's, and they said they really didn't care about this warrant article, because in their opinion, it wouldn't make a bit of difference to their business. And I called at The Village Pizza. The woman told me that she, again, knew nothing about this warrant article. So, I don't understand how we can take a vote tonight when four businesses at random knew nothing about this. And I didn't want to be responsible for hurting any businesses in the town of Brookline. I also called Arlington today because I had heard that they had this, and I wanted to see how it worked. Well, I spoke to a really nice woman named Marie. And she told me that it works very well in Arlington. But I needed to remember that they never had any parking meters there. So, when they put this in, they put in parking meters. And I think that makes a lot of difference. So, I just wanted to say that.
Please, ladies and gentlemen...
Mr. Moderator, point of order. Point of order. There's a number of speakers whose names you read off. And I think you were taking questions, but it doesn't seem like any of the speakers have any questions. They seem to be getting up and sort of jumping in line in front of the people who signed up to speak.
Well, that's a fair comment. And we've had a large number of questions. I'll call on Mr. O'Neill.
Thank you.
It's not a point of order, but it's a damn good question. Mr. O'Neill, you can come to the microphone in front.
Thank you. Don O'Neill, Sr., Town Meeting Member, Precinct Four. And I'm one of those poor people who live in the Village Way. So, I support the article that Chris wrote, Brother Chris. I still support the Select Board and their decision. I do have a question, though. And maybe Chris can answer it before we go further. Now, I guess my question is, the negotiation part with Children's Hospital. So, for now, if I have a visitor come, I have to pack my car behind my house in the fire lane, which is illegal, in order for visitors to come to my house. So, I guess my question is, how does this, how is this going to benefit us in this, in the neighborhood? I support the article. I, you know, got my yes vote. But I just really need to know how this is really going to help the people who live in my complex, who, you know, a quarter is a quarter, is a quarter. You know what I mean? But, you know, there is, there are a lot of questions. But I do support the article. And, you know, I'm not the only one in my complex who was a Town Meeting Member who feels certain ways about this. Wendy, she will speak against it, but I'm going to support it. All right? That's all I have to say.
Ms. Mockmuller.
I'm Wendy McMillan.
Yes.
There are two Wendy's.
Oh, I'm sorry. That one.
Wendy Mockmuller, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Five. I've just been realizing that Wendy McMillan, Precinct Four, and Wendy Mockmuller, Precinct Five, are getting lots of confusion. So, good evening. Picking up from, I think Jennifer said about the tail wagging the dog and the dog needing a better dog. I'm going to start off with my dog. So, on any given day during the week, you may find me in Brookline Village walking my dog Peaches. And for those of you that have seen her, she's a big fluffy dog. And she attracts a lot of attention. She's kind of an institution. And I say that she's a little bit of an official canine ambassador. If I'm not in a rush, we go to a lot of different businesses, on what I call a treat tour. And she knows all the places to give the treats. We go into Brookline Bank. We talk to our favorite people there. We have conversations. She gets treats. Then we head off to Seth's at Rier and Village Green. We get treats there and chit-chat. And during this, these great conversations, we talk about some personal things, family. We talk about our pets. I try to get the pulse of how business is going. And, you know, inevitably, there is always, there are always some concerns about what's going on in Brookline and about Brookline Village. And especially lately with traffic congestion, construction, uptick in Neta, traffic, et cetera. And I enjoy these conversations. And they enjoy my dog. And I continue to do this. But when I get questions and, you know, people expect some information circling back with them, it's not as effective if I find out from someone concerned and then I go back and it's sort of a one-off. So, I thought, you know, there could be a better, more effective way to do this, to channel information and get answers back to people. And I think there is a better, a better, more effective way. And that's with this warrant article, which would create a better platform for people to share ideas. Likewise, for Brookline Village business owners. This is a forum also for the residents of Brookline, Brookline Village as well. I think Susan made some very good points about what it's like to be a business owner in Brookline Village. And the things that she talked about, I think, really speak to the need to have this Brookline Village Advisory Board, where people can share with one another, business owners can share with one another, residents and residents and business owners together. And then this group can go back to the Select Board with recommendations. And I think it provides a better avenue for dialogue than what we do currently have. So, a couple people have made mention tonight and on emails that, why can't we just do what we do now and do it better? Well, maybe there is something to do better. Maybe it's to do it differently. And this could be it. So, I'm thinking that, you know, if we have this platform, we could hopefully move from feelings of frustration, from pessimism, from business owners and residents in Brookline Village, that nothing's going to get done. It's going to be the same. But maybe going to, creating the framework where people can affect change by engaging in a more proactive dialogue and leading to more positive outcomes. So, just in wrapping up here, one of the things we're trying to do as a town is engage populations that aren't necessarily always coming to the table. And one way to do this is through this platform, I think. And maybe it's not that we're asking, we should be asking everyone to come to the meeting. So, but maybe we take the meeting to the people. So, instead of having them come to Town Hall, the people that are part of this can have the discussion. the discussions amongst themselves in the village. This might be an opportunity to try something different, maybe different business owners could host the Advisory Board meetings, still open to the public, but this would be a great way for people to get in and see the businesses, for businesses to get to know, you know, each other and promote businesses as well. So I just think that we need to think a little bit more innovatively than just trying to do the same thing over and over and, you know, getting the same result. So just in closing, I just, I hope that people will see the benefit of having this renewed dialogue that I think would be very good for the Brookline Village area, and those of us that live in and around the village are experiencing a huge impact, as you know, with all the construction going on, the upcoming Gateway East project. And this is also, I think, one way to help mitigate some of that impact that we are feeling and will continue to feel for at least the next three years, and help maybe ease some of those burdens on people and reconcile some of those differences between, you know, what's going on in our neighborhood and then trying to give back to the people who live in it. So next time you see my dog and I in the village, I'll just say hi, and in the meantime, please vote yes on Warrant Article 16.
Now, I'll tell you, we've had an unusual number of negative comments about this proposal, even from those who I had on the proponent list, so I'm gonna give Mr. Dempsey a short amount of time. I'm going to give Mr. Dempsey a short amount of time to comment or rebut. You have two minutes, sir. Then I'll accept a mo, take a motion for the question.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Chris Dempsey, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 6, and Mr. Sandman's grandson on the Transportation Board. Mike, I'm glad I got your good looks and my grandmother's height. So I actually stood up, Mr. Moderator, because I wanted to address Mr. O'Neill's comment about ways that this could potentially benefit-
You can use your two minutes however you wish.
Because I think it's, he asked a genuine question on it. So I think it's, a lot of this is about engagement and about appointing a diverse set of folks to this Advisory Board. We had a Select Board, new Select Board Member, who ran a campaign that was all about bringing new voices to the table in Brookline, and I have high confidence that the Select Board will appoint a very diverse set of perspectives to this Advisory Board. Mr. O'Neill has expressed to me that he would like to apply to the Advisory Board, and I hope that the Select Board would consider putting him on the Advisory Board. In terms of specific things that could be done, if this Advisory Board decides to recommend raising revenue, and if that happens, if the Select Board approves that, then that revenue stream can be used to improve the quality of life for residents across Brookline Village, and in particular, for the Village Way. That could be anything from subsidized rates at the new children's parking lot, it could be looking at reforming the permitting system, it could be looking at changing the parking structure at what I call Lynch Playground or Lynch Field on Brookline Ave. There is parking there. That could be modified or changed in some way to better accommodate residents in Village Way. We could even have direct negotiations with Wynn, which manages Village Way, and say to them, we want to use some of the revenue from the Parking Benefit District to set aside spaces at Village Way for home health care aides or for guests to that complex. So I think this opens up a lot of opportunity and potential to do some creative things that help ameliorate some of the concerns that we have heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, the question's been called, and is there a second? Those in favor of terminating debate, please raise your hands. Those opposed, that motion carries by a two-thirds vote. And it's no question-
Are you waiting for me to ask for a recorded vote on the main?
I'm expecting a recorded vote to be requested on the motion, and it is.
I would like to request one.
Are there 35 Town Meeting Members who want a recorded vote? There are, we will have one. This is main motion, Article 16. Yes, this is on the, this is on the motion on page 16-10 and 11. Those in favor, please press 1. Those opposed, 2. Those abstaining, 3. This is the vote that counts. Motion carries by a vote of 124 in favor, 84 opposed, and 10 abstentions. And I call your attention that as opposed to the first night of Town Meeting, we have about 85 to 90% of the Town Meeting Members still present at 5 minutes of 11. Well, it is 5 minutes of 11, and I will entertain a motion to- to adjourn Town Meeting until 7 o'clock next Tuesday, and I want to warn you that with the amount of comment that we've encountered so far and the length of the presentations, there is some likelihood that we will not complete our business until the fourth session, which occurs on a week from tonight, so please plan accordingly. On the motion to adjourn, those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Town Meeting is adjourned until 7 o'clock Tuesday morning, Tuesday evening.